We have a clerk, if you said Ruthie, who's an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Maureen Stockham, who is the board of the town's administrator, and Ashley Vanellope, who is our floor president. The Board of Appeals is charged with defiling the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning laws and reviewing and voting on applications. While the proceedings are made in the public hearing process. The goal here is to facilitate the applicants and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process in 190 days. We begin ensuring the critical review of the announcements during the recording information from the trial. The opportunity to appoint representatives to then have time to make the presentation may be extended by the Board. We are going to question now. Must the public be invited to comment? Have a comment to be directed solely at the project, include an opinion in favor of opposition, ask a specific question about the project? Comment should be limited to two minutes. Any person who is speaking of the group of people, if you would please identify that at the beginning, now they will be interviewed. During a little discussion, the interest of time, comments become a predicate. Any other comments, representative. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair, through some of the podium, each speaker states her name and address on the record. Each speaker in a microphone will amplify her voice to support the audio of the session to be discussed. The Board may continue the hearing to a future date and time, otherwise, when the Board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make it a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more questioning will be taken. The Board will discuss the proposal amongst themselves to make a motion to approve or deny the application, locally divided by a summary of two findings and conditions. The intended vote is three numbers, a majority, which is regarded to be a favorable and favorable in the public. The Board of Appeals, decision may be appealed if provided for non-general law except for the case of a case of a. Next up, we have a public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not on the ICPG address, or anything not related to the ICPG. If any member of the public wishes to make his other comment for anything that is not on the ICPG. As a preliminary matter, if any member of the public wishes to see audio of the floor that we have, part of the podium, we get by a fact, with a record.
My name?
Thank you. The panelists reporting this was, please look at the channel, thank you very much. So first up here, the continuation of application 09323, common recovery LLC requesting comprehensive permits to construct 200 units rental apartments, to have five separate buildings, clubhouse, amenities, second apartment, 70, and three foot and five, common care. We look for a price agenda, we're going to encourage some of the applicants to write graphics, to show heightened maps, with conceptually revised plans regarding building placement, air plan, and details of the building, and then we'll model, stretch of the shadows, where we stretch, and stretch them out. How did it go up there?
David Calhoun, from Saxon. I'm also here, applicant, in turn by Peter Schuman, Jack Rapper, from the Saxon team, and also Chloe Smith, from architecture. If you, if there's two steps, Jack's trying to get up on the screen. At the last meeting, we made the recommendation, or the request, that we would be coming back to the structural plan, that it showed, that was in our screen to the major issues, brought to our attention. The major issues that were brought to our attention, for example, by the Affordable Housing Committee, they requested that we incorporate a playground into the property, which I will just run out. And the Board, and to those of the traffic engineers, the questions were raised about school bus drop-off, was it going to go into the property, was it going to just stay on Sandwich Road? The transportation department, this one through your school department, requested that the traffic drop-off remain on Sandwich Road. And one of the things that the Board discussed, and the group discussed, we mentioned, the idea came up about where parents would sit when they were dropping their kids off, if it was raining, or they were looking to pick them up. And the concern was that the parents, once the kids jumped on the school bus, would have to go out into Sandwich Road to turn around and go home. So, when we go through the plan study, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go to, and work our way through the, from the entry, and this is the original term that is on file right now. And a couple of the issues that were raised, oh, so, this is where the concern was about if these parents could stage, and you'd have to go out into the area and turn around. There's also a concern about how the road comes in, and it went into this corner. And what I've done, the gentleman is here tonight, but the gentleman who lives right here was concerned about a retaining wall, that he's shy of being 11 feet tall. And that was one of the items we wanted to look at and address. Also, the people that live right in these houses here, which is saying that there is not adequate buffer between the road and their homes, and could we realign the road such that the buffer grew, and we hopefully did something about the wall. Next slide, please, Jack. This is just the general layout, the original layout, you can see what we're working on. What you're going to see tonight is that we took this building here, and moved it to the park. You're going to see that we took the clubhouse out, and we put it into the building, and then it has, Clay would say, it's tied down a little bit, you'll see details from Clay in a minute. We also took the aisles out of the buildings, we took out what was a rare source spot with the neighbors, all these garages. We thought we were creating a stronger buffer, and they did not want the garages there. And what the request was, from a lady who stood up, tell us what you can give us, can you give us a 20-foot natural buffer, can you give us a 40-foot natural buffer, can you get to a 50-foot natural buffer? And what you're going to see tonight is, we took all the garages down, we created a 50-foot natural buffer. On top of that, we have a 10-foot, that we call landscape buffer, where we get to make additional improvements, and that was the closest to the question here. But Clay goes through all that, but I think the big thing, when you look at the plan, you're going to see that we went through a tremendous buffer to address this issue, lower the buffer, move this building away, if there's a concern to the people back here, and take that completely out of the mix and move it. If you don't mind, Jack, let's go back to the new slide, if you don't mind. This is the main layout. And you'll see, what we did is, we put additional cloths in the parkway, and we created a parking lane over here, or a staging lane, where the parents could sit, could pick it out, go to the bus stop, take a bank, turn, and go back into the property without ever going out of the 370, out to Sandwich Road. We also took the road, and we realigned it. We brought it away from the property line, and we took it completely out of the corner, and created this very large natural buffer. We eliminated the whole need for the retaining wall, so that retaining wall is completely gone. There's still a hollow over here, it's a natural hollow, but we're away from it now, and we can work with the natural grid. You'll see when Clay goes into the details here, you come into the property, this is there, what was the building back here, and on the mark under it, you'll see that the clubhouse partially slid out from the building, and it partially is in the building. We took also the buildings, and we brought them closer together. We moved a bunch of the parking around, we put, currently have the garage parking, the not-got parking is right here, somewhere playing around with ideas that may come up here, to put these people getting out closer to their homes. A lot of work went into this, you'll also see that we changed the building design. The buildings are a little bit shorter, right to left, in elevation, the buildings are also not as tall, just gone to a flat-panced building, around 50 feet tall. So we took a big 10 feet out of the building. The buildings are also substantially further back from the property line, because the legs are also. So, to that side, I'm going to turn over to Clay, and he can walk you through the nitty-gritty of what we did.
Good evening, Chloe Smith, Smith Architecture, been practicing architecture in common for over 30 years. What I want to say straight away is, we're going to show you that this is a process, you know, this is, this is a different plan than the plan you had previously seen, and I want to say that I was pretty surprised how old the leadership at Saxon was, and trying to respond to a lot of the concerns that the community had had. So, I'll just encourage you to at least listen with an open mind for this. So, as David said, of course, the entry is still coming off Sandwich Road, there's an area for bus drop-offs, parents dropping their kids, the ability to circle back without going on the Sandwich Road, the road now pulls off the property line, as David said, there's sort of a natural hollow here, we're not going to need to have any retaining walls. And we're coming up still on the northern side of the property. We have five buildings now instead of six, the garages are gone, the garages which at one point were shown at 13 and a half feet from the property line are gone. Next slide. So we're going just really, really quickly, not to beat this down, but you can see that, you know, we colored these, to be diagrammatic, to show the areas that are, what we like to say is, undisturbed natural, which is the dark green, and then the light of green, which would be our landscape buffer that would be, that would be augmented as part of this project. Next. Okay, so here's, here's the zoom in, and here's, here's the raw key here. This one, Clay, is 60-foot zone here, the dark-colored, you know, one of the concerns early on would be, you know, before we had roadways, and when you're building those roadways, you sort of throw outside that natural right-of-way. So what we decided to do is, you're correct, so what we decided to do is have a no-disturbed 50-foot zone, that nothing would be going into this zone from the construction, and that there would be a 10-foot buffer zone that would be part of the construction right-of-way, and that would then be planted out with various plantings, lower-scale plantings, after construction. So we distributed, we created a loop guard around the building, which works very well for the fire, fire trucks, so we created parking that was equally distributed all the way around. We have four buildings that are identical here, each one of them has, is four stories, 61 units, and then you have a building here, which the base level is primarily the clubhouse, and then there's a four-story portion that goes to about here, and is 56 units, and there's a one-story piece that pops out over here, that sort of becomes the entry icon as, as people come to visit the, visit the development. Next slide. So let's just talk about the height of the buildings and the architecture, you know, the original architecture, we had looked at some of these slope roofs that were, probably went down the cave, we went back, and I have some other images here, some precedents, precedences with buildings with either low-flat roofs or mansard-type roof. And what we wanted to do is, we brought the height of these buildings down to 50 feet here at the towers, the corner towers, and it's actually 45 feet here in the, in the body of it, I'll show you a little bit more of that in, in a few minutes, but I think the significant thing here, just as this low and a narrow wind shows, it is significant, significantly opening up the view corridor up to the sky. Next slide. So if you could go on to the next slide after this, and then go back to this. So, I actually saw a diagram that was on a leaflet that has been circulated around, and it, this is a little version of it. What we have here is, we have the property line that exists, and the distance between this property line and the houses may vary, we took a median of about 110 feet from this property line to the base of this house, and then we've got this property line across. So what you're seeing here is the L-shaped building, so you've got that four-story building, and then of course you have the slope roof and whatnot, but we have these legs that would stick out, and they were 75 feet from the property line, so what you have is property line, a 13 and a half foot buffer, the garages, the roadway, a median parking in the building. And, you know, we just were suggesting a little bit of existing vegetation, it varies from parcel to parcel, each individual has different, some people have just backyards that are totally clear, others have some planting, so we just suggested a couple. But what we're talking about here is, a really, really robust, as you come down to the lower one, 50-foot buffer. So this is the main layout, again, 110 feet from the house to the property line, in this case, you've got a 50-foot robust, undisturbed buffer, natural vegetation, with another 10-foot of vegetation that would be planted, indigenous to this area, and then you've got that 60-foot bay of circulation and parking leading up to the building, and you can see the body of these buildings are pretty much the same, but we no longer have these legs. So you've gone from 75 feet to roughly 135 feet, and also, you've now got a much more significant robust buffer, as I said, because before, this was fairly cleared out, and now this is still in. So now go back one slide, and this just shows the blow-up, a little bit, you know, a little bit more cloudy, and the, and the dimensions are clearer here, the width of these buildings are standard, they're 70 feet, and as I said, the body of this building is actually as low as 45, the ends are up at 50, but we'll get into that in a minute. Next slide. Let's go to that. Okay, so here's a look at authorized architecture. It really carries the same materials, the same natural materials that we had before, the body of the building is shingles, we're talking about using other types of wood, coffered wood and scored siding up at the top and at the base, what we're doing is, we're creating these bookends here, and I'll show you some precedents of some hotels that existed out this way, that's where we sort of picked up that idea on, and of course, the entry tower for each of the buildings. And this, of course, is the side that faces, that faces the wind road, and there's some other treatment on the other side. Now, the next slide shows some of the, some of the precedents that we had talked about, this, this was a precedent, it was called David's Palace, I think, I don't know if I heard that, Palace Gables, thank you. And this, this building, I believe, was demolished in the late 70s, early 80s, it really plays into that whole idea of, there's sort of a tower element at the end, comes up, it's a little bit higher, and then the body of the building feels as if it's set back, that was one of them. And the other one, I'll show you the synopsis of it again. Six, two, seven, six, two, seven, that was this whole hotel here, that also was eventually demolished, but again, plays into that same notion of, and I guess both of these had come down at some point in the late 70s, early 80s, for kind of projects. But these images became a touchstone about the plan, which I developed the architecture for the new, the new building. So the next slide shows the building that's on the end, the western part of our development site, again, four stories, gets visually broken down to three stories, this upper story is sort of painted a darker color to give the sense of a mansard roof that you found in those hotels, and then at the very end, here on the north side of that building, the clubhouse pops up to add some value to that clubhouse. This is a typical, typically of what you, the ends of the buildings might look like. Next slide. So, in terms of the program, it's all the same, it's, it's the same amount of sausage, really pushed into a much shorter sausage and a much lower sausage, and it's still 300 units, the mix is still the same, three bedrooms still represent 10% of the units within any given building, and it's a fairly equal split between two and one bedrooms, and, next slide, please. This is, of course, the northernmost building, just to give you a sense of how we're mixing some ground-level club uses, fitness uses, et cetera, on the bottom. So if you could just go back to the, I think that was the last slide in that plan, just go back to the close-up of the new site plan. Okay, here we are. So, you know, so as David said, I mean, this is, this is significant robust natural buffer that runs all the way around this site, and I think, I'm really kind of amazed at how well this actually did lay out, by maintaining that buffer, and I believe it really mitigates a lot of the, a lot of the questions about visual blocking of the buildings within the project. Okay? Got any questions? That was cool. Okay. So, it would be like, in the first building, moving, where the square is now, right there, that's the clubhouse? The clubhouse actually extends underneath the body of the building, and then it pokes out at the northernmost side. So if you look at the exhibit, you'll see, because the clubhouse is between 8 and 10,000 square feet, and the foundation of this building is, first there is residential, then you've got the clubhouse in the fortress, and it pops out to get the one, one and a half story element at the entry. Do you mind just going to the elevation? Yeah, sure. Can you cycle through, cut it slides in, bring that one more? There you go, there you go. The clubhouse right there. The clubhouse goes all the way underneath, from here to the entry edge, all the way up, underneath here. And then the whole building's on the left. These? No, right over here, is that, that's the clubhouse? That's the clubhouse. And it extends all the way in? Right, it's, it's all one building, it just sort of pops out, and we have some different articulations played down the scale to make it feel like a, really important. Still, this is very, very conceptual, it's through an alpha final design, we're just trying to get a sense of, of scale, and how, how much we can bring the buildings down, how it can lay. So, you know, I do, I like to change it, but the natural buffer that would remain, there's nothing going to be able to, what exists today, in time, are you going to protect those existing rooms? Ah, you know what, I'm going to do that. The intent of the natural buffer is to leave it in its natural state, we have it be almost a no-touch, if something comes up and we need to bring something back in there, say we had to bring a water line, or someone came to us and said, hey, we'd like you to put a sewer line along the back of property, if you ever needed to tie in the neighbors, that would be a different story, it's up to the back of the ward, but the intent is to leave it in its natural state. The idea right now would be to leave, leave it in place? Correct. If there were areas along the property line, for example, some of the natural buffer around here, there's also a 25-foot natural buffer, it's not on our property, some of that is missing, and some of it is used by people, and I have had a couple of discussions with people that have asked, okay, could we come, and could we do additional plantings along that line, could we put some giant green giants, or something like that? So we've had some other discussions with people to even beef it up more, but that would be going to their side of the natural buffer. Well, the likelihood that that happening would be, you'll miss me, I think. No. Because you might do that. It's been requested, it's been asked, because what happened over time, when they originally permitted this cluster development, all of the requirement of the cluster development was to dedicate a 25-foot no-touch, and on a bigger parcel, there was also no-touch. But over time, when they built the houses, it's been encroached upon, and some of that natural buffer has actually been removed. So, how would we condition that? I think, I think the simplest way to condition it would be for our attorney to propose language to protect the 50-foot buffer having no-touch. He is very familiar with it. Two things, I don't see any harm in having the condition, too, as David said, but also, the term of, what he states it in our, that you would state it, is to be built as per the plan, so with a plan like this, and it can be spied out in a more detailed landscaping plan, it would be a natural buffer, or we'll say it's a no- buffer. Now, as Dave said, sometimes, I don't think it's more likely, that if something comes up in construction, that the building commissioner deems it something that we need to go back to, helps form a substantial change, you know, we'd have to come back, it's not a, you know, it's not a problem to reinforce what the plan shows by a condition. And, I, I want to, you would object if you came up with some language as well? I definitely don't object to your coming up with language, I have the right to review it, but sure, that's a natural process, sure. Well, it'd be a given task. Absolutely, absolutely. I agree. Well, how do, go back. We've gone, height of that build, all the buildings are basically the same, the difference between this building and the other one, this has a one and a half story piece, it's lodged up under it, but yes, it's the towers on the ends and in the center are 50, and the, the path between those towers are actually pretty tight. We have the same 4-2 layout, it was approved by the Traffic Review, by, from that, so it's the same traffic test, same request of that 4-2. We actually, one of the side benefits of this, and we haven't finished calculating that, but obviously by creating that 50-foot buffer, taking the parking lot, which is part of that buffer, our impervious surface is, is really turning much more positive as time goes down, so the site is getting greener. Total number, including the back parking, is 570 spaces, 34 spaces of that is what is referred to as land, so we. And the world is tough on the contact, it's been 110 feet from the, past the, the first family, why, upper garden. Like yours, but pinch point right now is roughly 110, where we were up against it before. So we have, with that, we wish no, uh, uh, contact, and to try to do, whatever we, uh, uh, uh. And, well, we're, we're now going to, we're using power electric, and we're going to be using many splits, and typically when those go on the road. Right. About here. Okay.
Okay.
So, you, from the ground, you can't see them anymore. Uh, did, in the other plan, we were trying to not only create a cape car look with a pitched roof, but we were putting them in the tub, just because it, it worked. Um, we may need to do, uh, a little bit of screening, uh, some louvers, uh, if we think, but we'd hold them below that mark there, but, uh, we're holding 45 feet in the body, uh, and that would not include any, um, louvers for screening anything on the roof, but you can't see them.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I apologize, since we just saw these for the first time, as you're doing your presentation. Fundamentally, from your perspective, are you at your best and final on maximizing setbacks?
I think we, I think we are. Uh, I mean, we really squeezed things together, um, we played a lot with the courtyards, uh, because you don't want to get the buildings so close together, uh, that it doesn't feel like a grand courtyard, and we want, uh, this to feel really, uh, you know, very welcoming, um, you know, there's, there's a theory that if you open your door and you look across and you're 35 feet away, you have to have a conversation with your neighbor. If you're 50 feet, it's one of these. If it's 75 feet, you can pick up your paper and leave. So, we're in the middle there. Uh, so, there's not much room at all to move this any further. Uh, we could have been, come in and said, we're at 30 feet, and had the board, we want 50, but when the lady who came here, she said, she made a lot of sense, and she asked us to take out the garages, the gentleman who did the demonstration about walking into the back of the garages, that hit home, uh, and she said, give us 20, give us 30, tell us what you can give us, and it was recommended, um, by, um, I think one of the members of the selectmen, try to get at least a 50-foot buffer. So, we got the 50, and we got a 10-foot landscape, uh, so, um, we're there.
So, on the 10-foot landscape buffer, is, is that, in theory, is that going to be an evergreen buffer to reduce the amount of light transfer for when cars are navigating around the buildings?
Yeah, I think that what happens in that buffer, in terms of the scale of it, whether, whether it is evergreen buffer, we talked about some hydrangea, et cetera, I think that's something that we should discuss with you all, and also will be developed, this, as you, this plan is, looks a lot more finished than it is, so, but I think the key with that, for us, is to create a zone that during construction, there may be some disturbance in that zone when you're, when you're putting that road in, but you're not touching the 50. So, I think, I think it's up for conversation, what we can do in there, and I think it can be really nice, and I think it can be sort of the edge of the manicured landscape that immediately goes into the natural landscape, so.
Yes, because when we have the balloon, uh, test, there, there's some sparse areas, I'm sure the neighbors appreciate this first step, but, uh, again, if we can reduce any light transfer, we should be thinking that through. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Yeah, my questions, initial questions regarding the 10-foot buffer zone. Uh, regarding the playground, what is to the right of the playground, what is that contemplated to be?
Um, that, that happened at the Affordable Housing Committee, and, um, we're going to design and develop, uh, a playground that'll be fenced, uh, and the goal is to have an area where people can bring their kids over, uh, they can go inside the playground, they can close the gate, and they don't have to worry about the kids running out into the parking lot or something, so that, uh, and there'll be some seating around it for the parents. Uh, we envision it being, um, probably some type of sports surface, uh, and then some, um, neat swings, slides, uh, we'll develop a program for what we think, um, will be well-received by the.
So, both the boxes there are strictly recreational?
Yes, sir.
That's all I have right now, Mark.
Um, can you go to the driveway, the entrance? How wide are each of those lanes?
That's a double, that's the same big grand.
Yeah, it's an in and an out. How wide are each one?
I believe they're two lanes wide each on either side. That was reviewed by your traffic engineer, as well as the fire department and our engineers, so that you really have, you know, I think it's almost 60 feet wide, maybe? I'm going off the top of my head.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a wide parkway.
So, you don't think, um, on the right side there, it might warrant even like a half a lane pull-off?
That.
So, you would ensure that the kids that are.
That, that.
Around, uh, still plenty of room for.
That, that's what's right here, Mr. Finneran. You can't see it, but it is specifically what you asked for. It's the ability to stage, you know, four or five cars at least.
Oh, actually, I guess I can.
See it right there.
That's what the line is, all right. Um, now, on the.
And we, we have already filed, I believe it went to the traffic engineer's proposed concept, Ellen and Major, what that would look like, but we can give you a bigger detail.
Okay. Um, now, you're going to have your own 10-foot, uh, buffer beyond the buffer that you're going to maintain. Is your idea to, whatever you plan, to keep that planting tight, so it almost works as a fence to keep?
It, it's something that we want, we want to talk about, because in certain areas, it might warrant jolly green giants, and in other areas, it might be, uh, hydrangeas, really beefy hydrangeas, and just make it look, have a lot of color. So, it's going to be, uh, probably, in the end, it'll be a walk between the landscape engineer, and them working through a program to create the best look and buffer that they can create. But it gives us the ability to do it. It's within an area that if all of a sudden we find that in this back corner, that we should have jolly green giants, or we need jolly green giants here, we can do it. We're not relying upon going back here and having to do it.
No.
Or back here to do it, but this, some of the people have asked us to come to our property line and beef it up, and we're, we're open to that.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking, if you did it on your side, it would, um, keep the foot traffic out of the buffer, um, and make it more of a wildlife corridor, and keep the people in the neighborhood a little happier, too, so that there's not constant traffic in that buffer.
Sure.
But, just, I think it's something you should consider. Um, what's the width of the green space between the buildings?
That's right.
There, yes.
I'm pretty sure it's 80 feet right now.
80 feet?
Yeah. The buildings are 70 feet wide, just to give you a sense of scale.
Yeah, but they're 50 high, and the firefighter said you need one and a half, so you gotta buy five feet. Half of your 50 is 25, so that's 75, if you got 80 feet, you have proper.
I, I, I don't know if you've, uh, seen the email that the fire department provided to the board, but they reviewed our plan, the original plan, and signed off on everything.
The distance was greater in the original one, so.
It was. So, we'll have to go back to the fire department.
If, if that guy, the firefighter was here, who had, whatever, 40 years, and I think if, he knows as well as anyone, and he said one and a half times the height, so that would be 75 feet, if you got 80, I guess you're.
And we, and we've come down on the height, too.
Yeah, about 50, one and a half, 50 is 75 feet.
Yep.
So, if you got 80, you're, you'll, you'll follow that. Um, you, you, uh, you still have 483 parking spaces with the bank ones.
On top of that, yes.
Yeah.
We have five.
Now, you've.
Add the banked on, and it's 517?
Yeah, 517, 34, brings you down to, uh, 483. Um, you've removed the garages completely, so that, um, drops your, uh, and took the 10 feet off the height of the building, so that drops your, uh, construction costs a little bit.
The, the garages?
Well, removing the garages and then making the building slightly lower, I mean, that brings your overall cost of construction down, that would be a correct assumption.
It's also a loss of revenues, too.
Uh, oh, you're going to lower the rents?
No, 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 the, the garage, the garages, the garages are a revenue source, they're very w-
Oh, you were going to charge more for the garages?
Oh, yeah, oh, most definitely, you, garages are, uh.
Oh, well, I wasn't aware of that. Uh, but just.
One second, we just, please keep comments to ourselves, please, thank you.
But nonetheless, it still does bring your overall cost of construction down with this plan. Not that I, I mean, it's got to be true, but, uh.
But, uh, with your, uh, construction costs going down, uh, how about throwing in some more affordable units?
The, the construction costs do not go down that much, the cost of a rubber roof versus a pitched roof with a truss system and shingles, uh, it's almost a no event for the changes as far as construction costs here. We're going to, but, um, you know, there's no guarantee on construction costs, if the ZBA would like to guarantee our construction costs, then we can talk about making adjustments, but nobody can guarantee what's going to happen with construction costs.
Well, we could turn.
It's an ask. We appreciate the ask.
We could turn that around and, using your past statement.
We appreciate the ask, but we're, we're doing everything, and if you, I, I don't know if people caught it, but, do you have, Jack, can you go to the first slide? Uh, a gentleman who's pretty well-respected around this town, sent me a slide last week from the Falmouth Hospital, and the Falmouth Hospital report, in that they're right now short, is it 500 employees, and the major reason why they're having trouble getting employees is housing. It's not affordable housing, it's just housing options, and that's what we're trying to give you, and that's what's needed. This year, if you read this, and the, and the staffing challenges, we are in a housing crisis.
Yeah, but we're talking about garages at the moment, nobody's going to live in a garage. Now, you just said garages will cost you nothing, but before that, you said you were going to make money off them, so, I don't know, I'm kind of confused, I said.
I, I didn't say the garages wouldn't cost anything, I said the garages are a revenue source.
Yeah, but you said the construction cost was minimal.
The, the construction cost versus a pitched roof versus a flat roof is about a no event, it's about the same right now.
Wow, seems this is getting a little confusing here. Um, that's all right, but that's still on the table, anyway, huh?
What's the question on the table, sir?
Uh, a few more extra affordable units.
No, sir.
I'm good for now.
Anyone on the board have a follow-up question, based on anything? Oh, just to start with, uh, you and then Norah.
I just have a quick question. Um, is the height of the elevator penthouse included in the total height, or would the penthouse exceed the 50 feet?
The elevator penthouse is going to exceed at least the 45-foot height, I'm not sure where it's going to come through on there, elevator penthouses typically do, it's probably going to pop up about another five or six feet. Typically, elements like elevator, penthouses, mechanical units, and in fact, even mechanical screens typically do not count against height, but I would say that the, you know, in a concept design, assume that the elevator override may go up as high as another five feet, but it's going to be in the center of the building core, and you're, so in other words, the building is 70 feet wide, you're going to be set back at least 20 feet, and maybe you'll have two elevator overrides that are going to go up, the boxes, or let's just stipulate they're 15 by 15, it's fairly insignificant in terms of size, but I think that's a fair question.
Yeah, so, just for your information, though, we do look at, um, a fixed part of the building, like a penthouse, as part of the total height.
Okay.
So, when you get to the final product, you know, just if that exceeds, just that you mark it off.
We will, we will, on the next pass, when we come in to do this, when we've detailed the building a little bit more, we will give you that height to the top of the finished elevator penthouse.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim? Sir, may I follow? When can we have a scaled landscape plan that, I'm sorry, when can we have a scaled landscape plan to become part of the decision?
There's currently a landscape plan that's on file, and, um.
I'm talking about around the edge.
Well, uh, it's going to be more conceptual, uh, plan, uh.
I think what, and I don't, I'm not arguing with you.
You're looking for something with.
I'm looking for something that can be part of the decision, and it's conditioned.
We can develop that and get it to you.
Yes.
For the next hearing.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Can you show me on the plan where the dumpsters are going to go, please, please?
We're, we're looking at two options right in this area here, we may move it up in here, so we're still undecided on where we're going to put the dumpster enclosure, the recycling enclosure as it is now, uh, and we're looking to put it up in here.
Yeah, I don't think you want it near the kids' park.
Surprisingly, um, they're not your old-school, you know, dumpsters, they're, they're typically a building or a fully enclosed structure, because you have to walk in, there's recyclables, and we envision this property probably being, um, having, um, I forget the term they use, uh, but it's, um, valet trash, and we're doing it now in our other buildings, and what happens is, phenomenal fee, uh, it works out to about a dollar a day, uh, the trash valets, the people actually come through the building floor by floor, and they pick up your trash, and they take it to the recycling center, and they take it and they dispose of it, so that the tenants never have to carry their trash out to the enclosures. And it's incredibly well-received by, uh, the projects, the newer projects, uh, and it's, because of all the technology, it's really well-policed, and, uh, and when I say policed, um, they have a set time that they're supposed to put out their trash, and it's only in the hall for a very short window of like 90 minutes, uh, and if, for example, someone puts out their trash in an inappropriate bag, or puts out the wrong trash, instantly the trash valet person takes a picture with their, with their cellphone, it goes to the leasing department, and the leasing department notifies the tenant right then and there, you put the wrong thing in the trash, you put it out too late, whatever the inconvenience is, it's brought to their attention right away and it's handled. So, we're going to work on, uh, where we put the dumpster enclosures, uh, we're looking to keep it closest to the gravel pit.
And will the affordable housing units have to pay this $30 monthly fee?
Everybody who wants a trash valet will, will pay for it.
Thanks.
I, I don't know what the charge is in Falmouth, but, um, when you take your trash to, uh, to the dump here, is there a bag charge?
I, I put mine out the end of my driveway, free.
You have bags?
Free pickup.
So, you have free pickup?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. Most towns don't have that.
Yeah.
Really do? Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Anyone else you follow up?
Uh, one of these things is going to be staked out.
Excuse me?
One of they're going to be staked out.
The buildings?
Yes.
We staked out the other buildings, the original, as required by the ZBA application?
How about those aren't the buildings we have now?
No, but they're approximate dimensions, but we can re-stake these out, uh, nobody's walked the site to look at the previous, uh, but, you know, we can do it again, but it's, the requirement is that before you open our hearing, we have to stake it, and we did.
The, the, the buildings that you're building are required to be staked, so we can see.
Right.
Where they are.
Correct.
So, when, when is that going to be done?
We'll do it again.
It's supposed to be seven days before.
The hearing. The hearing. Before your hearing opens, and that's what we did, and as Mr. Pucci can explain.
But those aren't the buildings anymore.
Right, but as you know, that starts the process, and then as you move things around, we will stake these buildings in the next four weeks.
Seven days before the next hearing?
We'll try for that, yes.
I believe if you read your application, that's what.
Excuse me?
I think we would need to schedule a walkthrough for the board, and it would need to be staked before that, I don't think necessarily seven days before the next hearing is realistic, but. I don't think necessarily seven days before the next hearing is realistic, but I think we can come to a date, Mark, when the board will walk the property.
Well, I believe if you read the application, it says the buildings are required to be staked out seven days before the hearing.
They were.
But these aren't the same buildings.
So, we're going in circles. I think the point, though, is that...
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
One second, please. We will definitely get them staked so that we can see where they're gonna be placed.
And the question was, when will that be?
My only point is simply that the good process is that there are responses to the original plans, and we've done that. And Dave has said, yes, we will stake, and if you would like a site visit, of course, there's no point in staking if you don't go out and look. So, of course, we're totally agreeable to that. Just the point is, it has nothing to do with the original application because the nature of the process, if it's iterative and reiterative, and you don't run out there every, you know, every Friday after a Thursday hearing when some positive changes have been made. But it's really moot because we're gonna do it. Thanks.
When these buildings are staked out, this site is tremendously difficult to look at. It's so large. The question is, can we have a representative of the applicant there when we look at it, or is that just impossible?
Oh, no, we should be there.
Yeah, we will be there. We'll arrange, you know, when we stake them, we'll give the board notice, and we'll... And you can come for a walk because you can't walk the property now.
No.
You're not supposed to be on the property. No.
I know, I couldn't get on.
The application says, when you apply, you give us permission to walk the property.
We do at a scheduled event.
That's on the first page of the application.
It does, but it doesn't give you free rein to walk the property whenever you want. It has to be scheduled and controlled because...
I don't believe that's the case.
You have an attorney here, and I would defer to Mr. Pucci, but for everybody's clarity and sake, I do believe that a site visit that's formal with the zoning board itself, although it's not a hearing, but that it does have to be scheduled and announced such as tonight if you reach a date for a site visit. That's all. It's not free rein to go having members walk around.
I believe if you read your application, and you have the same application...
Sir.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Yeah.
You have the same application that everyone else does, and it says right on the first page of the application, by submitting this application, you give us the right to walk on the property. Tell me that's not correct.
Listen, I'm not gonna debate what the original application says and your regulations. We're being responsive to what you're asking, and I'm pointing out, and Mr. Pucci, of course, should chime in, that I believe that it's necessary that there be a scheduled date, and of course, the applicant will be there. That's the way it works. You know, we're trying to be positive, and I think we have been, and you're gonna achieve what you want. You know, that there'll be an opportunity with a site visit with Dave and probably our engineer to help you orient yourself as to the new plan, so we're being cooperative.
To be honest with you, sir, you're not.
I'm not gonna get into a debate with you every hearing.
Just go read your application.
No debate. No debate.
Still, the application is the application. They're no different than any other applicant.
Is there another question?
So, are there any more questions?
Thank you.
Well, I guess the next question would be, so when will these be staked out, which was the first question?
When does the board want to schedule a site visit?
Do you think that's necessary? Well, sure, site visits, great, but as I said, what differs them from any other applicant?
Procedure, Mark. We schedule a site visit, that's when they can be staked out. This is not a standard 40A, this is a 40B. It's also a rather large property that...
Well, I think I'd be quite capable of finding the stakes, and as I say, the application is the application. We've had other 40Bs, and they've all applied by the, abided by the rules.
Okay, I'll defer to our attorney to the terms of site visit. I don't believe that the applicant verbatim gives up their right as a property owner, that we need to properly notice if they refuse to allow us after proper notice, and it opens up an entirely different situation. But I'll defer to you, counsel.
Yeah, it's up to the property owner. If they wanna give you free rein to go anytime you want, that would be a little unusual, I have to say.
Have you seen one of our applications?
I'll look at the application, but they said that they're telling you, despite whatever they say in the application, that they do not want to own their property. I recommend not owning their property.
Let's pick a date and schedule one.
That might be the case, but the application says what I said it said, and I think you all know that, and maybe you have a copy here.
You've just had an answer from the attorney. We're gonna move on. Let's, if we want, let's schedule a site visit. How far, yes, sure. How far do we wanna go in terms of a site visit?
Soon as I can.
I'm suggesting, I mean, yeah, my suggestion would be something in April to make sure we're through the snow season. Early April, but do you wanna put this towards the end of the agenda of scheduling a site visit? All right. Yes, no, no, and they would need to be staked seven days prior to the site visit.
So, you can let us know when it's staked, and then we'll schedule a site visit. Correct?
Well, no, let's schedule the date because, again, there's, you know, various reasons that it's much better to have a date that everybody knows, and then we'll make sure that it's staked seven days.
I would recommend that we do it the very end of April, get the most favorable weather. And if we have what might be helpful, we'd like to put this into a more formal plan, incorporate the Civil, bring that back to the board the last week in April, maybe April 18th. Have that meeting, walk through the details, and then maybe we schedule something for the following week for a site walk, because if we come to that meeting and, for example, you have an issue with something, and we wanna move it, we talk about it, we'll move it, and then when you come out the week later, 10 days later, we can actually be on the right spot, and we can say, okay, let's discuss the dumpster enclosure. And we can put a couple spots in the ground, we can talk about them, and we can give you a feel for where the buildings are. So, I believe the August, excuse me, April 18th, we'd be prepared, we'd file with you guys a week before the more detailed plan. We'll incorporate a landscape plan. We'll confirm with the fire department. We'll double-check with them. We'll cross-check all our stormwater. The way this planning process went was we tried to respect what we already had approved as far as stormwater, et cetera, so that we wouldn't be redesigning, recalculating. But Alan and Major will work on that, and the goal would be to present a more formal package to you on the 18th, the week before the 18th, and then on the 18th, we openly discuss it like we are tonight. And then the following week or 10 days after it, we could do a site visit. That we could go to certain areas, and we could have an actual landscape plan, and you can look at it. You can say, hey, you know, it's kinda thin right here, let's try to do it. So, that would be the goal. And just so that Mr. Fineran knows, we have worked with the other boards around town when they have asked for site visits. And the site visits are typically a managed process, in that you don't want someone out walking the property, getting injured, getting lost. With conservation, I believe they've toured the site on three separate occasions, and every single time, we had a check-in process with those folks. We met them. If we couldn't meet them, they would call us and say, hey, we're gonna be on site today at 11 o'clock. And our big request was, when you get off the site, would you check back in with us? Because we didn't want anybody having a health issue and winding up in the middle of the woods and nobody knowing about it. So, that's why there's a controlled process when you go on a large site.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, may I ask this question? Do we have enough of what was just said so that we have a schedule, and do we have enough time in our schedule? First of all, do we have enough time and 180 days left to do it this way? Secondly, do you understand, so that you can tell us what these dates might be? How are we gonna communicate exact dates, when they're going to go out, when we're all gonna go out? How do we actually manage that process? First of all, are we running out of time? Can we do this in time? And how do we manage the dates? How do we manage this entire process?
What's the end date?
So, the 180 days expires in mid-May.
Mid-May?
Correct.
So, he's talking about the 18th of April, with 10 days after that, that's the 28th of April, and we got three weeks after that to make every other decision. When did you stake this out the last time?
We staked it out approximately two weeks before the hearing was opened. And we notified the ZBA that it had been staked and it was ready, and we checked all the boxes, and we viewed everything on your application, that we were doing it properly, and it was signed by the ZBA staff. This is not, this is just an updated application. The process typically follows this. This is what normally happens in a 40B process. You make improvements, you make adjustments. Just to correct your timing, your timing, I don't know what the date is in May, but that's for you to close the hearing. You have, after that, you have 40 days to discuss and finalize your decision and put it on record with the town clerk. Mr. Pucci could speak to that if he'd like, I'm sure.
Did you have another question, Tony?
We got, I mean, you're asking for six weeks to stake it out.
I'll leave it to the board. Again, not intending in any way to debate, but I leave it to the rest of the board. Dave explained that we think it makes more sense to come back to you first with a more detailed plans, more detailed than just a conceptual, so that if there are other questions that arise, that if there are adjustments, that it would be staked appropriately. So, we're not trying to stretch anything out. We obviously would like to finish as soon as possible. We're just trying to, in fact, make it as beneficial as possible, so that's the reason.
Tony, did you have another question, then, Suzanne?
I, let me just make this comment. I think that's the only way to do that. Revise your plans, let us see them again as clearly as you can so that we have something in our hand as we walk around the site that you're gonna stake. I couldn't go out without that.
Absolutely.
I think that's the only way to do this.
Yep, we agree. Thank you.
Suzanne?
And you're gonna present these new plans on the 18th? And are you gonna present them to the fire department and engineering and all that on that same day, roughly?
No. What we'll do is we'll submit the updated plan to the ZBA seven days before the 18th. We will reach out, and I believe we've already started the process of talking with the fire department, talking with the different departments, and giving them an update on it.
So, engineering will have it by the 11th?
They should, yes. That would be the goal, would be to give you a whole round of copies electronically and everything else so Norine can give them to whatever departments and group she wants.
Thank you.
Could you pull up Slide 3 showing the revised plan of the whole property? The follow-up question I've got about this is that, first of all, thank you for the increases and the setbacks and the buffer zone, but the question I've got is, has there been any discussion about shifting that central configuration to the western side of the property? It just seems to me at that point, in addition to maintaining those buffers, increase in the buffers, it gets this development at this stage farther away from the Kunemesset River, which has been a considerable source of concern.
I understand your concern and your question about the Kunemesset, but there's... You're raising an issue and saying, okay, if you move it this way a little bit, it's going to protect the Kunemesset more. That's why we're putting our wastewater system here. The thing that impacts the Kunemesset more than what we're doing is the development that's all in here, and also what's up at the top of the stream of Kunemesset that comes down the Kunemesset. We're not going to impact, and that's one of the things we're looking at right now, is what are the existing conditions? What is already happening in and around us? Because before you develop a plan and you're going to go for a groundwater discharge system, you have to know what the existing conditions are in the neighborhood, what the background is.
The other concerns regarding wildlife, it's a butter concerns, wildlife concerns. It's the overriding continuous comments that we're getting, why can't this just be shifted to the western side of the property?
Because every time you shift it this way, you make a few more people unhappy.
Yeah, but they're all your investors.
Question through the chair, is that a question, or is that just a smart-ass remark?
Who would it make unhappy if you moved it to the west?
There are obviously a lot of variables. It's a reasonable question. My client believes that this is the best layout, and one of the reasons is the impact it would have on the availability of space for the wastewater treatment plant and the leaching fields and all of that. We try to be as satisfactory as we can to all of the interests, but is, it is, as I think Paul Haverdy explained in his initial presentation months ago, you know, it's a balancing test. It's the nature of the beast. So, you know, the question, it's a legitimate question. I don't take any exception to the chairman asking the question. You know, for now, and I believe, although I'm not the site planner, but I believe that my client has legitimate reasons to say we're not intending to change it, but like everything else, there's a question, and there'll be more back and forth at the future hearings. But the answer right now is, that's why we're not changing it.
So, I just, well, one follow-up. Mr. Peterson asked, as to the buffers, is that the best and the last regarding placement? Is this the best and the last for you right now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason for that also is, when the building was back here, sitting back here, some of the questions from people was, why are you putting your building so close to our property? Why don't you put it close to your property? And that's why it's out front now, because we own this. So, we're putting it in our own backyard. So, we're setting an example that, okay, we're not going to put it back here. We're gonna give you more room, but this is ours. So, we want it protected. This may stay open forever. It may become something in the future. We don't know. But right now, the intent is that that's going to just be held, so...
Question, I apologize. Going back to timeline. We are getting short on time. Is it possible to review the updated plans on Thursday, April 4th? Is that the next, is that one of the future scheduled or potential meetings, Norine?
For us, no.
So, we were looking at our next meeting for this case as March 21st.
And then after that, we have?
April 4th.
April 4th after that?
They won't be ready by then.
Pardon me?
The plans will not be ready.
When will they be ready?
April 18th. Well, the week before that, April 11th, they'll be submitted on the 11th.
So, the meeting after April 4th, we have scheduled as the 25th.
Not the 18th?
No.
The 25th is fine. It will give us more time. We'll still hold the commitment to have them at the town hall on the 11th or 12th. The week.
Has there been any, I realize with a reduction in building height, that the impact on shade and shadow has been reduced. Has there been any additional studies to show how this is now being improved?
Well, we submitted an additional shadow study, and when you look at the shadow study that's on file right now, the only property that was impacted by the shadow study was right back here. And it was only impacted for approximately 20 minutes in the dead of winter. And the interesting thing, and the reason why people sometimes say, why are you doing a shadow study? Shadow studies are designed for work in an urban environment where it's building to building. The shadow studies do not take into account that you, excuse me, that you have woods and trees. And as we know from the traffic, excuse me, from the balloon test, we have a canopy that's over 60 feet tall. So, the real shadow that goes off the property is the trees. It's not the buildings. And with the redesign and taking the building out, doing another shadow study is really... It's just gonna be another computer model, but it's not going to show anything, not showing us impacting anyone.
Any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, we'll turn this over to public comment, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Design, good evening.
Tommy Zion, 36, Captain Bonober Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Thank you for that presentation, Saxon Partners. I appreciate you minimizing my, it's only 20 minutes that I'm going to get the shadow, but it's every day incrementally. I think a new shadow test needs to be completed with the new design, but I just want to touch on a couple of points. With the new design, Saxon moved the fifth building to the west towards Sandwich Road. You removed the L shape of all the other buildings, straightened out the L, pushed that L back towards the butters to the far east, where I live. My neighbors and I didn't get that much from you. You gave distance and then took it back. The roof is reduced, but the windows are still 41 and a half feet in height. Third and fourth floor tenants can still look into our backyards and into our second floor windows. I shouldn't have to window tint my second floor windows for privacy. I'm going to start what I actually came here originally to talk about. Kevin? Thank you. This is map geo used by the town of Falmouth. It's a satellite view of the parcel. The Coonamessett River is depicted in pink to the right, and it represents core habitat. The 30-acre parcel Saxon wants to reduce and build on is highlighted in yellow. The red dotted lines around the light blue grid represents critical natural landscape. This is over 200 feet going east to west where Saxon Partners wants to build. Interestingly enough, the critical natural landscape is populated with adult and juvenile eastern box turtles. They're listed on the Endangered Species Act in Massachusetts and are considered a species of special concern. These turtles feed at the Coonamessett River and migrate through the 30-acre parcel. I emailed recent photos of these turtles to Mass Wildlife on December 11th, 2023. Could you go to the next slide, please? This is a juvenile turtle I saved from my pool and then released it. Next slide, please. Two more turtles located, located close to my home. Next slide. And two more. These five separate sightings last fall in 2023 show the turtles using the critical natural landscape behind my home to seek higher ground. A letter from Mass Wildlife dated December 19th, 2023 stated, "The 30-acre site is not mapped as priority or estimated habitat." This finding by Mass Wildlife is what Saxon is using to justify moving forward without an environmental study. Just because the site is not mapped out for species doesn't mean they don't exist. They just haven't been officially documented. Mass Wildlife informed me their regulatory maps used to identify priority habitat are updated approximately every four years, and they last, and they were last updated in 2021. Mass Wildlife suggested to have Falmouth residents log on to Heritage Hub and document their photos. With enough valid occurrences, Mass Wildlife will map the areas of priority habitat such as the eastern box turtles and other species, and this project could be reviewed after their maps are updated in 2025. Our group, Safe Sandwich Road Now, is requesting an environmental study completed by Saxon Partners. Falmouth, we can't wait until 2025. On line 23 of the purchase and sales agreement between Saxon and the Rodriguez family, Saxon Partners is requiring environmental reports from the seller showing no hazardous materials, oil, or underground storage tanks on the 30-acre parcel. Saxon Partners, without, without hesitation, should understand why we need a complete environmental study from them as well. Go back to the first slide, please, Kevin. Last topic. Global warming and changing climate cycles are affecting our world every day. We are already experiencing extreme rain events in Falmouth. I've read through Saxon's applications sent to mass housing. They are installing infiltration basins only on the west side, which is closer to Sandwich Road. Infiltration basins are designed to catch stormwater runoff when it rains. Saxon's plans don't show stormwater mitigation on the easterly end where we all live. There needs to be stormwater mitigation installed to the left of that red line, which is outside of the critical natural habitat. The only place for this stormwater to travel on our end is down gradient into our homes in the Coonamessett River. This will be disastrous. I'll end with this. Kevin, can you go to the last slide, please? This photo is of a female eastern box turtle. She is situated on 30-acre site with her eggs. This is what's at stake. When you destroy their habitat, you destroy them. Thank you for your time tonight.
Gentleman with the gray hair, gentleman with the plaid shirt, you're next. I'll qualify, the gray hair with his hand up.
That must be me. No, my name is Chris Neal, and I'm here as a member of the Board of the Coonamessett River Trust, which is an organization that has advocated and tried to protect the river for going on 20 years now. So, I want to talk wastewater. I, I guess my question is, so what offsets, so you're going to introduce new nitrogen into the watershed. Great Pond is on the state 303D impaired waters list. That means it has a TMDL, and any new development of this size should not introduce any new nitrogen, according to the regulations, into an impaired water. So, what are the plans for offsetting all the new nitrogen that's coming from these new units?
Well, I'll ask if, be prepared to make any responses after all public comment questions, if that's all right? Sir?
Matt Hanley of Thomas Lenders Road. I was asked to come here and speak tonight because of my project management experience. I worked in Boston for 15 years, running $50 million projects, skyscrapers, you know, Boston Opera House, Rose Kennedy Greenway, Trinity Church, to name just a few. I reviewed the application. Unfortunately, it was an old, one of their original finger drives. I noticed a few, a couple of things, some of them have been addressed by the board. One was accessibility. You know, looking at the original drawings, there was only uniform parking spots. You know, as all of us know, there's going to be handicap spots and accessibility for fire lanes for our firefighters to access these structures, which most likely will be built out of modern materials. You're not going to be looking at cement, concrete, and steel structures like we did back in the early 2000s. A lot of these going to be, a lot of these materials are going to be glue lamps and composite materials, which have a higher flashpoint, which is a major concern to the fire department, but I'm quite sure they've already addressed that. But accessibility to the building for medical emergencies or fire emergencies, and I don't see any fire lanes in these drawings, but to see it on this tiny little screen, you know, the spot on the wall is 10 feet tall and 15 feet wide, and we're using half of that for this whole auditorium to, to be able to see the level of detail that's required in a project of this scale. A few things that I've noticed is, one was the trash receptacles, and, you know, not everyone has the luxury of having a valet service for their trash, and, and most of us in working-class homes have to go to our job during the day. So, to leave our, to have a 90, 90-minute window to put our trash outside our door just seems a little ridiculous to me, you know? We need to see, you know, where these dumpsters are going to be replaced, the, the, which, which, you know, where they're going to be placed, that obviously you're going to lose parking spots if you have dumpsters. One compactor on the original design was a, was a huge oversight, you know, to, I was in the United States Marine Corps. These buildings are very similar to the barracks we lived in. We had a common quad with long, narrow structures, and we had a dumpster for every structure. And, and even then, these dumpsters were, were overflowing. So, this needs to be taken into consideration. You know, this drawing is leaving out a lot of data that they don't want revealed. The thing is, we're approving a site plan without knowing what the layout of this wastewater treatment facility is going to be looking at, and they're saying, we can't shift the building here because, you know, this is our land. Well, we need to know the full scope of this project. What is this wastewater treatment facility going to look like? Like, batch reactors and, and treatment facilities have their own issues. It needs to be on the application. It's part of the whole structure. If I was coming, if any of us homeowners were coming to the planning board or the, the planning department for our house, we'd have to identify where our septic system is. This project is no different. We have to identify where the septic system is going to be. Is it going to be, what's that impact just on that one, one, that one subject? And once we get off, you know, the wastewater subject is, is a, is a minefield in itself, you know, like, like Chris Neal said, you know, this extra nitrogen going into, into the watershed is going to change the TMDL. It's going to impact, you know, the water for that whole watershed. But, you know, those answers, those questions are going to have to be answered, whether it's by this board or by state boards, before any permits are issued. But additionally to that, like it was mentioned earlier, the, on their original plan, they had stormwater runoff, infiltration basins, which was, would be like a sunken area with gravel that would, would absorb the stormwater runoff from the roadway, which is more significant than I even realized. It's two lanes in and two lanes out. We, they basically got a highway going in here. Yes, that, this has to be planned out specifically, you know, how much water needs to be handled and where it's going to go. In their, in their drawing, they're pushing all their structures to one side of this, of this project, and they're saying that they're going to put infiltration beds below their, the common greens and underneath the parking lots. But with the stream, with global warming and extreme weather events like we've seen, I think seven this year, like, I own a large property here in Falmouth, and the amount of water that, that is on my property, and I own a farm with, with pervious surface area, not impervious surface area, each one of these structures, each one of these parking lots, each one of these walkways is going to calculate into impervious surface area. Now, they can say they're going to put these in infiltration beds underneath the commons and underneath the parking lots, but that's at max efficiency when they're put in. Now, they're going to salt and sand their parking lots in the winter. All that salt and sand water is going to go into their catch basins, and it's going to negatively impact their infiltration beds. Now, you know, they might be able to take out some minor silt, but if these fail, there's no, with that maximum density and that amount of pervious surface area, that water has no choice but to go into a budding piece of the property or the Coonamessett River Basin. I recommend that there should be infiltration basins closest to the Coonamessett River Basin to add an extra level of protection to this resource that the state has spent millions to restore. And they just reintroduced river herring to this project. Those fish are very sensitive to, to stormwater runoff that's heavy in sediment and silt. So, I commend them for doing this, you know, you know, changing the buffer to help out the, the butters, but there still needs to be work to be done. And some of the big, like, meat and potatoes of this subject hasn't been approached. We need to know, you know, where this wastewater plant is going to be positioned exactly. What's the scale? What are those structures going to look like? You know, you know, what are the concerns going to be about smell and, you know, visual impact, you know, to those neighbors that are going to have that on their, on their lot line, in addition to its impact of this four-story building? So, I'm just bringing up some of the things I saw as a project manager, and, you know, there's a lot more questions that need to be answered for this project before it moves forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Precinct 8, Ralph Herbst. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This project is a disaster for our town. It's not on the sewer, which presents huge problems, which were just highlighted by the previous speaker. And it's a long ways from downtown, which means there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of that development, and a huge impact on Sandwich Road itself. I've lived in this town for 32 years. I was on the planning board for 14 and the community preservation for 10. This town does not want this project here. This town... Thank you. This town doesn't want this project at all. We have three entities in this town that develop affordable housing. We have the Falmouth Housing Corporation, which was started by a volunteer, and he used to walk from Provincetown to Woods Hole to raise money for his corporation to build affordable housing in this town. We also have the Falmouth Housing Trust, which is, develops affordable housing exclusively also. And then lastly, the one that I'm most proudly of, proud of, but does the smallest amount of development, is Habitat for Humanity. I personally have built houses all over the Cape, but several in this town for Habitat. Habitat currently has a large project going in East Falmouth. So, I must tell Saxon, the developer, that I know a lot of people in this town because of my involvement in this town and because I've been here for 32 years. I have spoken to many of them about this, and these people are all in favor of denying this project to be here in the town of Falmouth. I have not met one person who is in favor of it. I think Saxon has, has a purchase and sale agreement, I believe, so I'm wondering whether or not the zoning board of appeals can go to the current owners, if you want to walk the property, and ask them if you, if they would mind you walk, you're walking the property, because Saxon doesn't own that property right now. This, this whole project, we don't want to be, we, the town, we don't want to be the next brain tree with high-rise developments here in our town. We want to do it our way with our people and our organizations. I hope that... I think Saxon can listen to the audience right now and verify... I think Saxton can listen to the audience right now and verify what I'm saying, that the people in this town are going to fight it to the death. We don't want you here. We want to build affordable housing in this town with our ideas and our people. We don't want people coming here hiding behind a 40B sign saying, "You can do for us what we know we can do for ourselves." Thank you.
I have a very basic question, actually as a follow-up to the astute engineer or contractor speaking about aquifer and water quality and drainage. So I'm a direct butter, so I'm very concerned. So assuming the worst, that this project is approved and the drainage in our properties is destroyed, for lack of a better term, if our septic systems are not operating proper, properly, if future encumbrances about improving our septic systems is more complicated because of this project, who is responsible? The ZBA? Who do we go to as taxpayers, as citizens, to ask for recourse? The ZBA? The town of Falmouth? Saxton? Or do we punt? Would you consider that question and answer it before making a decision?
Joe Lemay, I live on Meredith's Drive. With the chairman's permission, I'd like to do a short PowerPoint presentation.
Certainly.
Okay. Everybody can hear you. Oh, I'm afraid of these things. So I missed the last zoning board meeting and the balloon test. Next slide.
You didn't miss anything.
The Miami Astronomy Club, as you remember from the first meeting, I said I'm an astronomer. Miami Astronomy Club has an event in the Florida Keys every year in February, and, and there is my telescope. If I just took a picture of the telescope, you say, "Oh, it's not so big." Well, that's my friend Jim. Jim's six foot four. I'm pretty serious in astronomy. Next slide. So here we are, I'm up there on the ladder. This is Bruce's telescope. He built the entire thing himself, including the optics. The, it's hard to see on the picture, but that's me looking in through the eyepiece and stuff, that equipment at the top he had to buy and attach the scope. He also built his own ladder. Look at those little rungs all closed together. He's really into astronomy. Okay, next slide. So on my way home from Florida, I passed by a, oh, sorry, I'll do this one first. I had drawn this little sketch, starting from the left, going to the right. For those who can't read it up on the screen there, it says odd-numbered houses, then the little flat place is Meredith's Drive, that's the actual asphalt road, then it's the even-numbered houses, then it's the backyard, and then there's like a vertical gray thing that actually says property line. This was done before. We had this latest presentation from Saxton Partners. So I next have garages, which are not going to be there anymore. And then I have the big building, and I have it drawn as, the, the part that shows the windows is the L that sticks out. But he's removed that L, so that's an error now. And so you take off the roof and the L sticking out, and then my drawing is accurate. It gives you an impression of the size compared to the neighborhood. It was already evident that the even-numbered houses, when they were in their backyard, are going to see these buildings, even with fifty feet of trees, and you're still going to see them. I drew this because in a raised ranch, the top floor is your main living area, living room, dining room, bedrooms, kitchen. So on the odd-numbered houses, if you're in your front living room looking out, you will look right over the even-numbered houses and see these buildings. You'll see the top twenty feet, eighteen feet, or something like that. So it is an impact for both sides of the street. Next slide. So this is a backyard. I just asked a friend if I could take a picture. That's what it looks like now. Next slide. And except for the garages won't be there and will have fifty feet of trees, there'll be a building behind those trees. This is about the scope. I stepped back, oh, sorry, I got to tell you, this, this development in Connecticut has nothing to do with Saxton Partners. It's a completely different developer. I just saw the size and said, "This, this is a good scope to, to augment the balloon studies so people can see how big these things are." So with tonight's presentation, those garages are gone. There's a bigger setback. I had stepped back, you know, to take the picture. I pasted off. So this would be like, you're against the back of your building if you're on the even side. That's what you would see. So now we have fifty-foot tree buffers, ten feet of landscape buffer. This will look a little better because of those things. Next slide. Also, it's not directly behind the buildings that will be seen. Anybody who's nearby could look to the right or to the left and, and see these buildings. So I kind of took a shot with a look into the right. So the impact will, since they are so tall, will affect many people who aren't really, you know, directly contacting it. Next slide. So, I wish it was a little clearer. So I have taken a picture. I, I went around the garages and went, went close to the building. So you see the cars parked in front of the building. We all have a good idea of the size of cars. Most of those cars are SUV-type vehicles, so five and three-quarter feet high. You see the cars, you see the building. Now, their improvement with the mansard roofs and the flat will, will, just count the four floors and then it'll end. So this picture is a little, little too big right now. So, but you still get the size gist. I do want to say on the side, you hit me in the heart, I love mansard roofs. That's a good improvement. The next slide. And then I went down to the other end of the parking lot and took a shot so you can see the, the SUV and, and the building behind it. Okay, next slide. And this, I stepped away from the building and from that, sent a lone Jeep to be in an odd-numbered living room. So from the odd-numbered living room to that Jeep is like looking at a car in the driveway across the street. That's how far I paced it back. So you're in your living room, that Jeep that's solitary there at the end of the parking lot, that would be your neighbor across the street. That's his car. So right behind that would be a raised ranch, and then behind that would be the building. Now, on the big white building, you see there's like a gray area that's over the Jeep, like the first two floors are gray siding instead of white. So a raised ranch from your living room, looking over the raised ranch across the street, would be just a little bit taller than that gray area, the gray siding. So you would see the top two windows now, so through fifty feet of trees now. That's an improvement. Okay, next slide. And this is where I proved that my camera does not take good pictures at night. Being an astronomer, the lights at night are, are my enemy. These are full cutoff lights. And I'm just standing in the parking lot taking pictures. You see the lights in the windows in the building, and then you see the parking lot lights. Even though these are full cutoff, they're still kind of glary. Next picture, it's another night shot. So you see the, if you can sort of see those fixtures, you can see that they're lighting up their own pole, but they're not, you know, full, they are full cutoff. But even with full cutoff, there, there'd be a significant amount of light spill into the neighboring properties. Okay. Thank you for listening.
I live at 102 Meredith's Drive, and I'm a direct butter. I've lived in Falmouth for over forty years, and over thirty of them, I've worked for Cape Cod Healthcare. I'm a hiring manager, so I know what most of the staff at the hospital, being a heritage JML, what they're all making. And yes, housing is a major concern for us to be able to hire qualified staff. But at the fact that I know what these people are making, they're not going to be able to afford these apartments, number one. Number two, I do agree, Falmouth Housing has done a wonderful job with their projects in town, and they truly do keep the feel of the Cape in Falmouth in the forefront of their development plan. That's not the case here. This looks like it's going to be an urban complex. The board has been asked numerous times to request a transparent plan for the entire property. That's not happened. What is it? We don't know. Our very first meeting in Town Hall said phase one, phase two, phase three. We don't hear that anymore. We're not stupid people. And if that area is not going to be developed near Sandwich Road, why not revitalize the entire plan? Mr. Finneran had a great idea last week, and I went home and I'm thinking about it. If you're not going to need all that additional affordable housing when we make that ten percent, why not spread it all out over the thirty-two acres? Make something lovely, two stories high, and, you know, I mean, that would be great. Future development? Zoning Board, what does that mean? That's what Mr. Saxton, what Mr. Calhoun keeps saying, future development. What does that mean? And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
My name is Peter Cooper, 102 Meredith's, and I'm not going to argue with my wife. What I wanted to let you know is, on the regulations for 40B, what I can never understand is that according to 40B, the relationship in effect of adjacent streets, the relationship to adjacent buildings typographically, so I don't know where we have apartment buildings four stories high in Falmouth, perhaps down, downtown, which would be in an industrial area. But according to the 40B regulations, and there's forty-six pages of it, that you should make homes, and out of all the homes that get built, a certain amount are supposed to be for affordable housing. So rather than trying to put up something that's supposed to be in Boston, Quincy, Brockton, or like the one that was done in Plymouth that they aren't too happy with on the waterfront, I think that regular homes, duplex homes, two stories high, then a roof, would be more appropriate for adjacent streets under the 40B thing. But it's the choice of the board and the, what's going to happen to taxpayers. And if it does go through, it's going to cost everyone, taxpayer in the, not the Commonwealth, but in the town of Falmouth approximately thirty-two dollars per year in an increase in your real estate taxes to afford, to be able to get the stuff that is needed to maintain it. And as my wife pointed out, and it's the gentleman from down about the Coonamessack River, where is all that excess amount of water going to go? And does the town of Falmouth actually have enough water to provide the whole town if they have a fire? And what's the water pressure going to be ending up with? Someone has to be held accountable. And I do have something on wildlife, and there was a couple more neighbors that have pictures in their backyard that are closer to Sandwich Road by Tanglewood that have a picture of an owl, a picture of one of the turtles in their backyard, not on the, not on the land that they're talking about in the backyard. I also have here, and I didn't get a chance to do it, is a picture of some of the wildlife that I've been able to taken over my last two years, and I will give it so you gentlemen and ladies may see the wildlife that's there. And the other lady that I saw has on her phone, but I think you need to see the wildlife that's actually there. And there is also the question, according to Department of Natural Resources, I grew up as, it's something else now, DCR. I had asked about one of the species, and I will not mention that yet until it comes into season because my gut-wrenching feeling is that if it's found out what it is, they will go looking and destroy it. And there was also another species of trees that is growing that in nineteen oh four was ruined from the, a disease, an imported disease. And it is coming back very slowly. It is still being there, but I had found that there is a Cassadoneta growing on the backside of the property, and if it indicates that it's growing there, obviously, it is also in that, the woods. I have not really seen it because that woods is all full of ticks, and I don't particularly care for having ticks all over me. But I do think that it should be considered, and later on, I will get a picture of the one we have right on the line, but it's on our side, not on the other side of the property because I was very surprised when I saw it two years ago. As I say, I enjoy my wildlife, and I do hope that they put in regular housing. I'm not objecting to 40B housing, but it needs to have regular homes that would be in conjunction with that of 40B, adjacent streets thereof. And I'm quite sure if all of you read the forty-six-page thing from this, come out of Massachusetts, pertaining to that they must put down, but it has that iffy, if they don't want to, they don't have to. But an apartment building is not going to look good, and it does not. And I think that would be a challenging thing in court in Boston. And I wish to give this to you to let you see the wildlife. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Heffern, 127 Meredith's Drive, and thanks again for holding these hearings. These open hearings are very important. I'm going to have a slideshow if you don't mind. And as many people point out, this is an important greenway between the Coonamessack River and going east-west. So the site is located, as you probably know, in that green belt stretching east-west. Next slide, please. And Cape Cod is a sole source of aquifer. It's our only source of water. It's been impacted already by nitrogen, PFAS, and other contaminants, but it's very important that we have recharge area with porous permeable soil to allow for infiltration to keep that strong. Next slide, please. There are six different lenses, the Sagamore lens upon which we lie here and upon which this development is placed, is the largest by far in Cape Cod. Next slide, please. And this feeds our ponds, our streams, the Coonamessack River, Great Pond, Little Pond. It's a key asset for our drinking purposes, but also for our estuaries and abeyments. When we have southward flow from this proposed development towards our abeyments. Next slide, please. And this is a map showing that the red circles are indicating that these are impaired abeyments, largely from too much nitrogen, largely from septic. About eighty to ninety percent of the nitrogen is from septic. Next slide, please. And this is showing, the blue rectangle is the approximate location of this development, and this is immediately upgraded of Little Pond and Great Pond, and within both of those watersheds, it's in the headwaters. Next slide, please. And this is showing the Little Pond and Great Pond watersheds. So this proposed site is directly within... watersheds. So this proposed site is directly within the watershed environment, and this is all flowing down towards the coast. So this nitrogen input from this will be very significant. Next slide, please. So here in the yellow is the proposed site, and due south is Little Pond and Great Pond, Green Pond further to the east. We are entirely up gradient, the flow is directly south. Next slide, please. Little Pond, the nitrogen load needs to be reduced by eighty-six percent. So the red and the pink colors indicate excess nitrogen, and we're spending tens of millions of dollars addressing this here in Falmouth, and you're all aware of that, I'm sure. Next slide, please. Here's Great Pond. This also has been impaired severely, and the town of Falmouth is undertaking a forty-nine billion-dollar project to deal with sewer in a lower part of the Great Pond region, but not the upper pond region watershed that this development be part of. Sixty percent of the flow to Great Pond is from the upper Coonamessack River, exactly where this development will be, sixty percent of the flow. So having sewers down in Great Pond area will only cover forty percent of the nitrate input. Next slide, please. So Great Pond is impaired to severely degraded, poor water quality, high nitrogen levels, low oxygen levels in the summertime, and septic system fertilizers cause sixty to seventy percent of that nitrogen load. Next slide, please. So we need to reduce nitrogen by fifty to a hundred percent from this region that this development is proposed for. This is a very significant environmental issue and a great economic issue. It's going to impact Falmouth, and you'll be dealing with that on this board and your successors as well. Next slide, please. So this is an indication showing the highest priority areas. This is prioritization of abeyments from nitrogen, and this is from a study done by Cape Cod. Notice that this blue triangle again is in the area of highest priority for limiting nitrogen input into the subsurface. Next slide, please. December twenty twenty-two, Falmouth was designated as a nitrogen-sensitive area. So the entire green part of that map on the lower right is an area that's recognized as being nitrogen-sensitive, and it includes all of Falmouth. Next slide, please. So twenty twenty-three, Falmouth was declared a natural resource area and a nitrogen-sensitive area. Next slide, please. And we are hanging in the balance. In this publication put out recently by Cape Cod Commission, the Association Preserve Cape Cod, rather, the Coonamessack River has been cited as one of the major achievements in Cape Cod in the twenty-first century. So this restoration of five million dollars is just completed last year, and three seventy-five Sandwich Road is immediately upgrading of the Coonamessack River. Next slide, please. And this is work that was done by Betsy, who has spoken here previously, and many other people, a multi-agency effort to improve Coonamessack River and restore herring. Next slide, please. Now, this development is located in the headwaters, in the watershed, and this area, any contaminants such as nitrogen entering the subsurface for anywhere from zero to ten years to get into that river system. So it's not something of looking at decades and a slow progression. Because these soils are so sandy, contaminants move within ten years, zero to ten years into that watershed. And this is a study that approves that from U.S. Geological Survey. So over fifty percent of Cape Cod's water is rapidly moving into our surface waters and into the abeyments. So here we are, this is Coonamessack River, and this development is immediately up gradient from the U.S. Geological Survey data. Next slide, please. This is our site, forty-three acres, right? Immediately upslope. This is a natural green area, and we're trying to preserve natural green areas, perceives our recharge zones, allowing for surface infiltration to feed our aquifers. Next slide, please. The Hilly Administration is finalizing transformation rules, trying to protect our watershed. So this is ongoing efforts at the government level. At the same time, we're dealing with forty B. So we have diametrically opposed objectives here, right? Have more housing, four-story high rises, urban setting, same time they're telling us to reduce our nitrogen, protect our abeyments, diametrically opposed. Next slide, please. This needs to be challenged, and the Massachusetts Office of Coastal Management gives local municipalities prime ever responsibility for managing our land use along the coast. This embedded state doctrine, right? Recognizing the strength of home rule. Next slide, please. And the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act has to be followed when ten acres or more of impervious surface are created in natural areas. This project will involve more than ten acres of impervious area. Therefore, an environmental impact report will need to be addressed. Next slide, please. So here are the thresholds that the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act follows, and these thresholds are exceeded by this project. Next slide, please. We have over nine point four impervious acres designated buildings. We have a sixty-foot wide, I have a thirty-foot wide roadway, it's sixty-foot wide, as we heard today, extending half a mile. So it's going to be far in excess of ten acres. Next slide, please. MEPA is required. They will need to have an environmental impact report, and it should not be done by Saxon Partners. It needs to be done independently. Next slide, please. Fifty-one thousand gallons per day discharge, right, of nitrogen to the Coonamessack River. Next slide, please. Now, Cape Cod Commission allows you, the town, to declare that this is a district of critical planning concern. This is regulations in Chapter E of ordinance ninety dash fifteen. Next slide, please. So districts of critical complaining concern are nominated by the town such as Falmouth to declare a moratorium to protect natural areas. I have websites for all these. I'll send this to Noreen. This is something that Falmouth can do. Next slide, please. Natural resource protection and housing priorities need to go hand in hand. We can't have multi-story buildings constructed on open land that we need for our recharge. We need to have affordable housing in a Cape Cod-style format, such as many other speakers have indicated earlier. Next slide, please. This is a map showing where dense housing should be in sewer areas towards downtown, right? The purple, or maybe it's red triangle, rectangle to the upper midpart of that map is where this proposed development is. It's far away from public transportation, far away from stores. It's not meeting the criteria for forty B. It is not in a location that's suitable unless you drive a car. So it does not meet the criteria for forty B in its present location. The purple, that is the area that is designated that would meet forty B. Next slide, please. This is a wildlife corridor between the Coonamessack River and open areas further to the west towards Buzzard's Bay. Next slide, please. This is yellow triangle again, and the gravel pit above is that wildlife corridor, very important for coyotes, for turkeys, box turtles, many other wildlife. Species are present despite what we heard at the previous meeting. Next slide, please. So this is a critical environment, as designated by many agencies such as the Association Preserve Cape Cod. Next slide, please. This is from Saxon Partners' website. If you go to their website, they're very proud of their developments, and this is from Plymouth. Next slide, please. So they're very happy with their development, and it's a multi-billion dollar company that has projects all around the country. Next slide, please. And this is their Hanover Colony Place in Plymouth. So this is the four-story building. So it was very useful seeing buildings from Connecticut and the scale of these. This is what is being proposed for this location. Take a look at those maps. This is in Plymouth, right? And you can drive there, half hour away. So it's surrounded by Aldi's and many other box stores. This is what we're looking at will happen. We know that there are three parcels. They're looking to develop one right now. What's their plans for the other two? They don't know, right? As developers, they want to know what they want. This is what is in Plymouth right now, half hour drive from here. Next slide, please. Saxon sells their properties, right? They're an investment. This is not something, they don't have a long-term investment in Plymouth. They will not have a long-term investment in Falmouth. They're looking to make money. It's a Wall Street approach for development, turning over properties or investments. That's not real estate. It's not for forty B. And this is what has been done in Plymouth. They sold the properties. Next slide, please. And they're being challenged. The Plymouth Zoning Board, right, they're being sued. So if you go onsite and check out, there are different... I am speaking, please. There's no point of order. Am I to give up?
One second.
Am I to give up the microphone?
One second, sir. Yep.
One order. You're making a representation that our company is being sued. We are not. We have not.
Because you sold out already. So you're a successor.
No, there is no, that is not our project. That is not us being...
It was your project.
No, it was our land.
It's your, it's your land. It's your land, but not your project.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just through you, you know, I respect people speaking, but it's really not on point. It's gone on for fifteen minutes. You have a two-minute timeframe.
Does the board wish to extend additional time to make a presentation?
Thank you. I appreciate the great... Next slide, please.
Sir, to all, to the chair, please. How much more time would you need, sir?
Three minutes at most.
Sir, thank you.
Plymouth lawsuits following Saxon development. This is in Plymouth, right? And these are, the Plymouth Zoning Board is having issues. And everything I have is, has web links. So feel free to look at this up if you don't believe me. This was Saxon property. Next slide, please.
Mr. Calhoun, if you want to make a rebuttal at the end, you'll have opportunity.
This is Indiana. So this is throughout the country, right? And this is what we're proposing for Falmouth. Take a look at those images. That's proposing for Falmouth in a residential rural area, zone currently agricultural. Next slide, please. Will Falmouth allow colony place mall-style development in rural Falmouth? Is that what we want? Is that what you want? Once this goes in, two other parcels will follow. You think you can stop it? Precedent has been set. This will become an urban setting. Next slide, please. Preserve our aquifer and our natural lands, right? Nominate three seventy-five Sandwich Road as a district of critical planning concern. This development requires a MEPA review. It exceeds the thresholds. Declare a moratorium to protect natural areas and Cape Cod aquifer. I thank you very much.
Mr. Peddle Ricky?
I try to read everything that comes in.
I was gonna, anyone who has made a presentation tonight, I need the copies to please be submitted to the zoning administrator as part of the record. If you could please forward them via email attachment, you can drop a hard copy off at Town Hall. Thank you. Is that...
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Melvin.
Good evening, Marjorie Parmenter, thirty-six, Meredith Drive of Butter. For the record, I'm opposed to the development forty B as filed in October of twenty twenty-three. I have a few comment, I have a packet with attachments for the board to read. I'd like to make a few comments that pertain to other environmental comments that I've heard tonight about the property. I've got, I reviewed some, three documents. There's a Cape Cod Commission letter from November of twenty twenty-three, where it said that the applicant, they suggest the applicant conduct a natural resources inventory or similar study to identify the presence and location of the most valuable wildlife and plant habitat on the site and serve as a guide for the layout of the development, which would be the most protective of the most sensitive natural resources, and that they should consider moving the proposed development further away from identified sensitive resources and towards the central and western portions. So, or maybe even move it to the gravel pit. I'm not going to read all of it. The staff also said that the, the original natural vegetative buffer was too narrow to really support too much wildlife as a corridor. And the old growth forest on the eastern parcel provides valuable carbon sequestration to the trees and soils. So to any extent possible, the Cape Cod Commission said we should minimize tree clearing at that end of the development. So going on to another document, there was a twenty twenty-four February Goddard Peel Review document stating there are no previous findings of rare species having been mapped on these parcels. I feel just because there was no historical record on file of mapped, that doesn't mean that there's not plants or concerning, concerning, special concern wildlife. I really think that that determination should have been phrased inconclusive until an actual field survey, survey is completed and the findings are reported. I mean, if this peer review was based strictly on NHESP data, it doesn't seem fair, because these properties are privately owned and have been for decades. So it's really unlikely that any reporting or survey would have ever been done unless the owner requested it. But just because we don't know what's on there, we shouldn't be so dismissive, because this is a pretty large habitat. And we, the Butters of Sandwich Road, are well aware of turtle and wildlife sightings. We've been there for years. We've seen them at the parcel boundaries. And I myself have gone, seen two generations of eastern box turtles visiting my own backyard. And my yard is up the street on Meredith, twenty feet to the Saxon line, and it potentially a hundred, only a hundred feet from the proposed leaching field, with a deep, deep depression basin in between that's deeper than the leaching field. So I'm worried that that's going to fill up with water. So, you know, the, there was a walkabout December nineteenth with Goddard and the Falmouth Conservation Commission, as requested by Mr. Calhoun, and on the FCTV, the next Zoom meeting with the Falmouth Conservation, they had tested somewhere, probably the depression basins, for hydrated soil. They didn't find any. But is there any more to this report we haven't seen? And I'm just wondering, why did it take so long for it to be publicly filed? It was only recently posted, and it really didn't provide for any timely rebuttal from the Butters or residents on any of the findings. And we know in winter, nothing's blooming, the vegetation's dormant, there's no leaves, and the eastern box turtle is hunkered down in the dirt during its berminating cold season. However, last June of twenty twenty-three, our own Falmouth Conservation Commission recommended in a memo that surveying the eastern box turtle and their habitat be done, particularly near the gravel pit. The last document, which is in your packet, is the Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife NHESP Eastern Box Turtle Handout. I'm curious how the term rare species in the Goddard Review of February fits in with the multiple categories of these MESA A-listed species for both plants and wildlife, which are either endangered, threatened, or special concern. I'm not sure how that rare species comment fit in with that. So the document in your handout mentions that clearcutting of old forest and paving the parking lots will serve to fragment the habitat of this turtle, because it moves between both drier upland and the marshy habitat of the Coonamessack River. It relies on both habitats. So clearcutting the old forest for the parking lots will fragment the habitat. Now, I believe it's really important to improve, preserve as much of the east end part of this parcel as possible, and during clearcutting, to use mitigation measures, also mentioned in the handouts. So conclusively, I mean, birds, mammals, reptiles, plants, they all matter. I mean, this is the largest site development project ever proposed in Falmouth. The east end is critical to the nesting habitat of the eastern box turtle. It will get clear cut unless setbacks and protections are kept in place. And ignoring this wildlife, destroying its habitat, will impact our town. It's important to preserve as much as possible. I am asking tonight that the ZBA take action with Saxon Partners to allow a state-authorized environmental agency to conduct a field-site survey or series, as seasonally appropriate, for both the flora and the fauna on both the three seventy-five Sandwich Road and forty-five Pitch Lane parcels, Pitch Pine Lane parcels, and putting focus on the nesting and foraging habit of the eastern box turtle. So my attachments, which can't be seen, would include the handout, which you have from the site, all about the eastern box turtles and how they should be mitigated. And I have also attached a list of wildlife observations gathered by neighbors over the years, and a few photos of... and a few photos of my own observations and those from the neighbors. And I thank you.
Good evening. Betsy Gladfelter, West Falmouth. I'm not going to talk about the Coona Messet. I think you've, there's been some great presentations tonight. I just have a procedural question. I know when you have a site visit and you all go together, it has to be, it's a public meeting and it has to be publicly advertised. So I'm just wondering if you could tell us, because I know there are people interested who would like to attend that public meeting. If, if you could tell me, will it be posted on the website? How will people know?
It would be, yes, it has to be posted like any other public meeting in accordance with the open meeting laws.
Okay.
So it would be, Maureen, I'll defer to you as to.
Week before.
I think the site visit just requires two days, but we typically put.
Yeah, 48 business, 48 hours during business.
I don't think that 48 hours would be sufficient.
I'd like to pick a day, pick a date tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I think the requirement is, because we do this with Concom for public meetings, too, that it's, it's, it's two days. But if it, if it could be a week, I think people would appreciate that.
I think the board will endeavor to give as much time or give as much advance notice as possible.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Counsel. Could you turn your mic on?
Oh, just talk loud. While you're waiting for the next commenter, I, I was just wondering, are you going to address the turtle survey tonight or habitat survey?
Yes, that was, yes. The answer is yes.
Okay. Okay, great.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Doug Brown. I'm with the select board, but speaking as a resident. Will the non-affordable units be year-round occupancy? Is that going to be something that's written into the decision so that we don't have to be concerned about short-term rental use?
Certainly, if you want to answer, file means.
That's been a request from the town for quite some time. We're willing to work with you on that and consider it.
Any other public comment? Do we should clarify anything that was said or?
Just a couple of things, just briefly. The gentleman who accused our company of being sued in Plymouth, that's not our job site. That property was sold to a property. And what they were doing is they were doing a subdivision under the existing, excuse me, they were doing this, an age-restricted product under the town's own bylaws. It was approved by all the boards in town. They have been sued by an outside party that is not even in the state. So they're working, as you say, why don't we do things under our own rules and regulations? That's what that developer was doing. And they're doing, they're trying to do an age-restricted product under the zoning and they got sued by an outside party. It is not Saxon Partners. We sold the parcel a couple of years ago. But they bought it to do something under the existing zoning. The statement that we're going to do a retail center, like Colony Place, here, and we've said it several times, once the town gets to their 10%, and we're going to get you very, very close to it, your zoning is back in your control. Anything that is done with the excess land has to be under your local zoning rules and regulations. The 40B program hopefully will be gone. The concern about turtles, wetlands, wildlife species, the process for that is for us to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and for a decision from them. It's in the conservation, your town conservation's authority. We started that process back at the beginning of the summer. We filed, they did their site visits, they did the research, they did soils testing, and the conclusions were filed. And they've been on record now for over 90 days. Whether or not, you know, people didn't go to conservation, they were provided notice by the Conservation Commission. There are no wetlands, there's no species of protection, there's no flowers, there's no hydric soils on the entire 42 acres. That was a decision issued by your own Conservation Commission after site inspections, not one, not two, but I believe they did three. In addition to that, if you go to your 20, Jack, by any chance you have it? If you go back, there was a study done by, I believe it was Tufts University for the town. And under that program, they went and they highlighted the areas for future development in the town of Falmouth. And when you look at their study, they went and they would disqualify property if it was habitat area, if it was wet, if it was deeded for permanent open space. They did that study and they filed a report with the town. And if you look dead center in the middle of that report in red, what is highlighted for future development? The properties that we have under agreement, the entire 42 acres are in red. And the reason why they put them as a high priority for development is because none of the restrictions were in place, none of the challenges. And that's where we sit. We went to the areas that are in your own studies and we said, where do we want to buy land? In an area where the town already knows the development needs to go. That's why we're there. We think that we've listened to the board, we've listened to the public, we've followed the steps. The gentleman who keeps saying that a MIPA filing has to be done, he's correct. But it does not have to be done before you conclude the ZBA process. That happens after. And you're shaking your head, saying, no, no, no. It, it is not something that is done. You do not have to do it unless you're in need of a state permit. So for example, we could step back and say, we're not going to do a groundwater discharge permit. We'd prefer a sewer connection. No state permit, no MIPA. We worked with the town. The town did not want us tying into the sewer because of all your challenges. They've asked us to look at extra areas for future needs for the town. We've done that. You asked us to create a buffer. We've done it. You asked us to lower the height of the buildings. We've done it. And we're doing what you ask. Yes, this is going to happen. It's something the town needs. And the standard is not whether or not somebody doesn't like it. Mr. Pucci could speak to it. The standard is very, very different. Do you have a housing need? Are you under your 10%? It's not the local concern. If you're under the 10%, that decision is made. We're trying to do a high-quality product. We're trying to work with the town. We're trying to focus on your concerns. And yes, people here, some of the Butters don't like it. People that want it and need it, they don't show up at these hearings. The people that need it are working. They can't come to these meetings. We all work. But the important part is, we're trying to do a high-quality product. We're following all the rules and regulations that are required, despite what some people think or say. And we're doing it better than is required. And I hope that we can continue to move this forward. Our suggestion is that we will file the detailed revised plan on or about April 11th, April 12th. We can go through that on the 25th, if that's the next date you have on your schedule. At the same time, you'll have your finalization from your traffic engineer. Vanessa, he's already got our studies, had it, our responses back. We've addressed everything in a joint manner, so the parties are satisfied. And then after that meeting on the 25th, we can have a site walk and we can look at the things. And I think at that point, we're pretty close to sitting down and discussing waivers. And that's where we go. Because we've done your stormwater, I know the project manager who works in town and, and raised a bunch of questions. I know he hasn't had the opportunity to bring Allen and Major's stormwater report because he would know that all the questions and concerns about runoff and drainage have already been fully vetted and addressed and they're being met. So with that being said, we would like to file the updated plan and meet with you on the 25th and have that be another round of discussion like this and then have a site walk within 10 days. If that fits with the board's schedule, I would have to check with the property owners about who can come on to the property for that site visit. It's typically just the ZBA. You know, you can't ask someone to open up their entire property to the town. But we'll, we'll talk to them. We'll see what we can work out.
I mean, I, you know, I feel completely whipsawed back and forth in a way that I don't think we have all the information necessary, particularly about environmental issues. Let me just go through this quickly. On December 6th, 23, you filed a, for determination of applicability. That just has to do with Huntwood Buffer Zone, if you're working in that. They said no. On June 30th, someone from Conservation Mark, I can't pronounce his last name.
Casperzic.
Casperzic, sent a memo to Jed Cornark Town Planner. And, and it says, basically, he's recommending that somebody do a survey looking for these turtles and other environmental issues. Let me just, and then respond, if you would. I don't think any survey was done. Then we have here a letter to your consultant from Fisheries and Wildlife dated December 19th, 23. And it says, based on the information provided by whom? I don't know. He doesn't say. The division has determined that at this time, the site is not mapped as a priority or estimated habitat. Haven't got a clue what that means, but that's what the letter says to your consultant, Goddard. So maybe they don't have all the information. I'm listening to folks in the neighborhood, seeing pictures of all these turtles that I have to believe are in the neighborhood, but yet we have Fisheries and Wildlife saying to your consultant, we don't have any issues here. Then I have to ask, you mentioned that there are no hydrology issues, which are part of wetlands. Who did the, I don't remember seeing any core sample reports about, or who, who did the hydrology cores to determine that?
Conservation, in conjunction with our engineers, they walked the property.
But no one did the cores?
They did. When you say cores, they look at the soil and if they have a concern, they then dig up the soil. Your conservation agent actually walked the site with, and did cores at random, wherever he wanted. That's the gentleman who I spoke about, who we had a check-in policy with because he wanted to go back. He wanted to explore everywhere and he wanted to do cores with no one with him. He wanted to do his own inspection and we allowed that. The only requirement we had was that when he went, after the first visit, I went and met him. If he wanted to go back at any time, the only thing that we requested was a phone call when he went and a phone call when he was off the site. The site has been fully inspected by your Conservation Commission as to wetlands in the issues that are in that report. Mr. Freeman filed it with the ZBA strictly, strictly to complete the file.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that point. Yes, everything you said is accurate to the best of my knowledge, in any event. What I'm trying to get to is, did somebody not go as far as they should have? Any, wait a minute, let me just finish. Anytime I've had to do an assessment for Conservation Commission, we've had to do core samples to determine the hydrology of the soils. And I don't see any of that done here.
Those are, those are not done by us. Those are completed by your conservation.
No, they, they are done by the applicant.
No, no, sir. When the, when your conservation agent comes out and requests to inspect the site, they do their own cores as they walk. And the two engineers then come back out and they inspect the soils. So if they think there's hydric soils, the town agent, your representative, takes the core on the spot and inspects it.
Did that happen?
It did. It's all in the record. It's been completed, signed off.
Mr. Chairman.
The Conservation.
We have some conservation here. I don't know if any cores were taken. How did they determine whether the soils had a hydro?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Freeman.
Certainly, you know, you can ask your Conservation Commission to comment at the next hearing. If they do anything in writing, I would naturally like to see it before the hearing. All I can say is that the proper procedures were followed, the proper filings were made, or else they wouldn't have reached a determination. So that's all we can deal with. I respect the question, but if you want further amplification, then.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm not arguing. I, I appreciate that. My question is, did we, as a town, do everything we should have done to check this site? That's all I'm asking because I, I'm seeing all kinds of evidence of issues out here from the folks in the neighborhood, but yet I'm not seeing it from Fisheries and Wildlife. I don't see it in the determination of applicability. I see a memo from Mark Cas.
Casperzic.
Casperzic, suggesting that a survey be done for the wildlife corner. But I don't see any of that done. Is there evidence to that effect? I feel like I don't know who to believe.
Don't believe us. Believe your Conservation Commission. They had a hearing, they publicized it, they provided notice, they had their people inspect, they had the reports filed, they reviewed the files. The Conservation Commission had another public hearing. They made a determination. There was nothing within their jurisdiction. They issued that decision. That decision had an opportunity to be appealed by any party. That, that window, the people who came with turtles, that came with concerns about different things, that was their opportunity to raise their objection.
And I agree.
None of that happened. Everything was done exactly per your rules and regulations in the state.
I agree with you, but something is missing. You can't have all these turtles out there that I've been seeing tonight and have, not have an issue.
If, if I may again, thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
And I do appreciate the discussion. You may recall, those of you who were on the board, on a couple of other 40Bs I've worked on, the one right at Little Pond, now that's on the sewer, I know. But the question of box turtles came up, same deal. It's not in a mapped area. And to that point, there's a process. If your Conservation Commissioner or agent felt as though was, there was something to be done, they could have contacted the state Natural Heritage Office and submitted their own information. There's a process for that. They didn't do it. So in terms of the town, we've done what we need to. I believe the town has done what it needs to, but that's something they could have done. But as to the box turtles, you may recall that there's a condition on the Little Pond, the name has changed now.
Repeat that, I didn't hear you.
The, the, in, in your 40B permit, albeit it was on the sewer, but it was 28, 28 units on a small site in the, near Little Pond. But same deal, not as a mapped area. That was shown, same with Natural Heritage, letters stating no mapped endangered or rare species. But you put a condition because box turtles were brought up, as they usually are. And what typically is done is the kind of condition that you had in that comprehensive permit that basically says that during construction, if box turtles are spotted, they shall be identified and I think moved to certain areas. And that certain, I forget the exact words, forgive me, the exact language. But something like some protection, be it fencing or corridors or something, will be. or corridors or something, will be created to help to protect the box turtles during that period. So that's how it's usually dealt with. You can check that decision to see the exact language. But that is the way it's typically handled.
Dr. Gladfelter, I see your pan has been up numerous times. Would you like to comment?
I'm sorry? Excuse me.
Betsy.
Yeah.
As she's coming down, there has been a request by the Concom agent recommending a turtle survey at this point.
But that's a, that's a fine recommendation, but we don't have to do it. We've complied and that's what we're saying. And I would also suggest.
Maybe we condition it that way.
I can't tell you, I can tell you I don't think that's proper, but I can't tell you now because we need the entire decision. And anything that you do in a condition obviously would be reviewed, simple as that. I'm not going to guess at things. Mr. Chairman, I would also, I mean, certainly this speaker apparently wants to say something, that's fine. We thought it was appropriate to respond, especially to the zoning board member, again, the questions. But, you know, it's up to you, but I just don't think a debate the rest of the night makes much sense. Thank you.
Dr. Gladfelter, one second please. Counselor.
I didn't want to interrupt your conservation person. I just wanted to, oh, I thought the lady was on the.
She's on the Concom.
No, she's not. Yes.
I'd like to hear from her before I comment. Why don't you let her speak?
Dr., the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Betsy Gladfelter. So the process is, Mark walked the area and he did take cores, as you said. And what they do is, they're, they're just shallow cores to look to see whether it's hydric soil, soil that supports, supports wetland plants. And, but he did in his report suggest that there be a survey of turtles. There are a lot of box turtles there. For those of you in town who like box turtles, this is a wonderful box turtle habitat. And I think, and the mapped areas, you kind of, you tend to think, well, if it's mapped, it's really important. If it's not mapped, it's not important. These maps are not that accurate. And in fact, they are changed every few years. And the areas that have been mapped as priority habitat has, have, in the last iteration, shrunk. But it is true, and I think you mentioned, that if there is box turtles in an area, then the procedure is, there's a special condition that you have to have somebody on site and to remove them. But as Marjorie pointed out, once there's development there, the turtles are gone.
Well.
Yeah, I had a suggestion on it, on the, can you hear me okay? Just, I, I just had about five bullet points. I think probably I'll put in writing to the board where I think, you know, we need a lot more information and data on certain issues and we also need more of an analysis under your local regulations because you have more restrictive regulations on a lot of these civil engineering site issues, like the gentleman was talking about, about, you know, the onsite septic. You don't totally defer to some later process with DEP. If you have more restrictive regulations, you need to get comments on those, you need an analysis of it. You do need more information on those issues. You need more information on stormwater and drainage. Basic civil engineering infrastructure, civil engineering infrastructure issues, you do need more information on. On that, and just to cover a couple of the things too, while I have the floor and then I'll stop talking. That short-term rental issue that the gentleman mentioned, I would ask for a proposal from the applicant. They don't, they don't have to provide it, but if the issue of year-round housing is important in Falmouth, I would ask for a proposal because that's very important about. That's outside of the issue of the affordable housing. It, it has to do with year-round housing of, because those are the people that work in your hospitals and places like that. So I, they can refuse to provide it or they can provide whatever they want, but I would request it, that they make, you know, here, if they do have a proposal regarding year-round housing, I would, I would request that. Waivers, in addition to those, you know, site reviews, specific civil engineering issues, stormwater and drainage and all of that, we need to know where we're at on the waivers. You know, is, has there been an updated waiver list? Really need to start looking at that, about what, what specifically the applicant requires waivers of, and then start to analyze it, kind of going backwards from that. On the, a couple of other issues, the habitat and the turtles or, you know, vegetation as well. And first, to address the wetland issue just quickly, because I saw it before I came to the hearing. It did look like there was a request for determination of applicability that was filed with the conservation commission. And they have jurisdiction on that and that goes to your wetlands jurisdiction. It goes to wetlands under the State Wetlands Protection Act and it also goes to wetlands and buffer areas under your local bylaw. It does look like the commission did rule on that, that they issued a negative determination. And the word negative doesn't imply it's negative or, you know, it, it means there isn't resource areas within their jurisdiction. So the conservation commission does have the jurisdiction to issue that. Whether or not people agree with it or not, they have jurisdiction over that. And really, when you're talking about whether there are wetlands, jurisdictional wetlands under jurisdiction, either for the conservation commission and 40B under the State Wetlands Protection Act, or you standing in their shoes under the local bylaw, their, their determination on that negative determination is binding on you for that process. Habitat is a separate issue. You know, people make a good point, I have to say, and I don't mean to be argumentative for the applicant, but people make a very good point that these are not, you know, you can't take one report one day and, and have that static and apply forever. So these, map, mapping is always updated. And as information comes in, that's when natural heritage responds to that. They, they can't sit in their office and figure out that there's habitats suddenly. There has to be evidence that comes into them. And then these, these, these maps are updated and their findings are updated. And, and where there may have been no habitat before, suddenly when the information comes in, it's mapped habitat. So that's something that is constantly changing when it comes to the environment. Habit, so habitat issues where you are right now with natural heritage, they did issue, you know, a letter saying this is not mapped habitat within our jurisdiction. However, again, this is always changing and it's dependent on what information is coming in. One option that you could have, and the conservation agent, at least from what I read, was very clear that, that they were recommending a, a survey be done, a habitat survey. And, and I can say, you know, people, I would ask the applicant, are you willing to do a habitat survey of, of the property? And, and what will that be? Who will be conducting it? And, you know, people may be skeptical because it's coming from the applicant, but I can tell you, like, a Mr. Goddard, G-O-D-D-A-R-D, who, who, whose name is in some of this correspondence with natural heritage, he's a professional. If, if he's retained by the applicant, you, you can take that for what it's worth. But he's a competent professional who does these types of surveys. He would specify in his report what he did, what he recommended, what he observed on site. Someone could accompany him, you know, an agent or somebody on behalf of the board to see what was done in terms of the survey. You also need to make sure it's done at the proper time of year. And I'm not a box turtle expert, but I'm sure your conservation agent is, is, when should that survey be done? Because it has to do with when they're, you know, when they're hatching or when they come out, whether that be the spring, summer, I, I don't know what it is, is it late winter? I know for other habitat issues that I've had, it, it's very dependent on the time of year. Like in other words, if you don't get out there by late March, early April, then your survey is pretty much meaningless. So even if you can't require the applicant to do it under the circumstances, you can certainly ask the applicant to do it. Are you willing to do a habitat survey? Go out on that site, have Mr. Goddard make a proposal about what it is that he'll do, have him accompanied. At least then you get a report and you can judge it. You, you can judge what he did and what his findings are and you can judge the credibility of that and you can start to get to the bottom of it. Because it's, it's an issue, I mean, let's call a spade a spade. If, I don't think anybody believes anybody's out there planting a box turtle to, to make a case against the project. If there, if it's box turtle habitat, it's probably credible that it should be examined. So, so I would ask the applicant that and they, they don't have to give the answer tonight, but I would make the ask and find out what the answer is to that, if they'll voluntarily do that survey and if it can be witnessed and then you get a report on that.
How's the board feel? And Mark, I know you have a question.
Well, I don't know, Betsy's more of an expert on this, but maybe I'm a little more suspicious than most, but I think there's place for at least one of those on every board. And it seems to me that there's an extra amount of hesitancy for the applicant to leave, even have anyone step upon that property. And it makes me say to myself, why? And I think that maybe a survey like this may well be indeed, maybe they know something we don't know. And they don't want us to know.
Yeah, on that comment, just, but just to follow up on it and just, just let me complete the point and then whatever you want to say about it. However, that comes down, the fact is, if they agree that Mr. Goddard's going to do a survey, they lay out what he's going to do, when he's going to do it, they give you the opportunity to have someone witness it, that does give you more information. It gives you data that, that you can look at. And I, and I can tell you, I've, I've been on the opposite side of him on, including a case this week that, you know, we, I defended a denial decision and he testified for the applicant. But I can tell you, he's a professional and he's competent and he's qualified. And if he laid something out to you and the applicant agreed to do it, it, it would, it would go a long way to give you information that, that you can start to really look at. And, and just the, the last thing, so again, they don't, I'm not asking them for an answer tonight, but it certainly would go a long way if, if they could give you a reply to that. And, and I'm going to just make a, I don't mean it to be controversial, but the, the issue was raised by Beals and Thomas, by the individual who, who presented to you on, on Beals and Thomas's report. And they did talk about the amount of land area involved. So, you know, again, the elephant in the room, the applicant provided this modified plan. Would the applicant consider a modified plan that uses the rest of the land and, you know, has a modified design? And, and this isn't something outlandish. And the applicant had mentioned in a couple of the hearings that I've attended before about, you know, working sessions. And I'm not saying to have a working session, but typically, a working session would be after a serious modified plan had come in or stakeholders come in and they, they start to look at the site as a whole and they, and they try to come up with some, you know, design that might meet people's expectations and needs and desires more in terms of the surroundings of this project. And again, not to put them on the spot tonight, I don't think you need an answer tonight, but I do think you, you need a definitive answer and commitment from the applicant. Will you consider a revised design that uses the rest of the land area? And, and come back to us with a serious modified plan that we can look at in good faith and, and judge on the merits. And if they don't want to do it, then that's fine, it'll be a subject for your deliberations later on about how you want to rule on the project. But I, you know, I would recommend an answer from the applicant because it would go a long way about, with, with what you're trying to do and the constant drum of comments that you've heard, if they really want to be responsive to that neighborhood. And you're, you're not beholden to the neighborhood. You have jurisdiction over it, independent, you've got to hear comments and you've got to take them into account. So it's not that you're working on behalf of the neighborhood, but it would behoove the applicant and it would help out the town if, you know, the concerns that you're constantly hearing, if the applicant might consider responding to that by a modified plan which uses the full land area. So that's, that's pretty much, you know, a summation, but, but that's kind of the state where, where I think you are at this point.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Ken, I can't possibly remember all of that. I think it's wonderful, what Trey Pucci said. I agree with all of it, but I can't remember. May I recommend that he put that in writing, bullet point, so that we can all review it and then understand what we have to do next or what we might want to request? Because I thought that was an outstanding explanation.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. And I have some answers and some responses, but I do agree with what the gentleman, the member just said. We would like to see that in writing as well and we can certainly consider it and obviously let, get back to you. You know, a couple of points, I think Mr. Mucci, Mr. Pucci might not have been aware or seen, but we have been through the drainage and the stormwater. There's already been the review by Beals and Thomas, essentially, in essence, at, I believe it was the last hearing, he was satisfied with our drainage design and with the responses that our engineer, Phil Cordero, gave. So, you know, you can put it on your list and we'll respond, but that essentially has been dealt with. In terms of, you know, another site change, you, you can put it in as a request, but I think you heard tonight that we're pretty, for I believe valid reasons, quite confident that we've addressed what has been asked of us and that the answer has been no, we're not moving the project onto the other site. Again, the question is a fair question, but we have given our answer. Then on the question of wildlife, I think your conservation member has acknowledged that, you know, we've done what we need to do. Now you may request, and apparently you will, that there be a wildlife study. Again, as they say, we'll take it under advisement, talk to Mr. Goddard, but we've met the requirements, as I think Mr. Pucci also said, and we followed the procedure. And, you know, the condition that I talked about, that your conservation commission member essentially confirmed is how it's been dealt with, that would be fine. So, you know, anything else, I would say, we're not going to respond off the cuff. We responded to the main questions. And then let's see what Mr. Pucci writes up and what you would request and we'll respond. Simple as that.
And I'm happy about that. You can post it as a, if you'd like.
Absolutely.
And when, I, I should specify too, because I'm your special counsel, but I haven't, you know, I don't have a relationship with you, but I can tell you in advance, when I write to a permitting board as their attorney, I expect it to be a public record because you're going to be relying on it. I consider it to be part of the public record. I want the applicant to be able to respond to it on the record. So just be aware that when I write you a letter, I'm not writing it to you with the intent that it be privileged under the attorney-client privilege. It's meant to be, you know, to assist you in, in hearing the application and, and getting the answers to the questions that you need as a public document.
Just for the board's edification, should we request something very specific under the phenomenon of attorney-client privilege? We'll make sure you're aware.
If you'd also like to add to that list, your request for long-term housing, we've been talking about that with the town for some time. It's a priority for the town. It's not a requirement, it's not part of the 40B process, but we've told the town that we're open to a proposal and what that looks like. And our goal, we always work from a one-year lease. And that's typically the way people work. And the only outs on the leasing program is in the case of military service. If they're out of the country, they're stationed somewhere else. And it was brought to our attention that it may be important to work on some language that might given out for someone who's working at the Oceanographic Institute that's sent to sea or back to another part of the world to do research, that they would have an out. It was also brought to our attention that the town was working on a program, would they, they would pay to put long-term restrictions on a property. We never received anything further on that or writing from the town, but it was something that the town, I believe, is working on now.
Disgusting.
The town's working.
Disgusting to eliminate Airbnbs, there's already too many. And the, the proposal is to pay individual homeowners, I don't know if it goes as far as someone like you, but I mean, knowing that you're willing to abide by that would certainly be a plus.
Just to clarify for you, our tenants are not allowed to do Airbnb. So if you're renting a unit, you can't sublet it on an Airbnb, you can't sublet it to anyone without permission, so.
I guess clarification, George, could, what's the turnaround time on that document for the board and for the applicant? So is there time to get that to the applicant for our next meeting, so they could respond?
That out next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I I want to, I'll speak to the chair next week, and I'll send that to Noreen in the chair, I'll have that out by next week.
So I guess one of the questions is, what next meeting date, and what what do we want on agenda items?
Just, I I don't know exactly how to even phrase this, but looking at the presentation tonight on some of their other properties, they seem to carry kind of the same fingerprint, which seems to include, in some cases, well, not not as far as to say shopping centers, but is there any way you could, we could know, what are the combined list of potential uses of that other property to the west that they seem to covet?
So if you're referring to as of right, it would be based on the zoning for the property?
Yeah, I mean, can they put a shopping center in there? I mean, what, what, what are the possibilities?
No, it's not zoned for business.
So it's only individual housing?
So it would be based on what's allowed within the zoning district?
So that 11 units that they said is pretty much, and that's the limit, there's no other? Okay.
So going forward, next dates and agenda. I know that, Council, you wanted to indicate in terms of list of waivers, or updated list of waivers?
Yeah.
Do you want to circulate, I mean, in terms of suggesting or floating a document to, either through the zoning administrator or to Mr. Freeman about points or suggestions, Noreen?
Well, my suggestions?
Certainly.
I'm going to talk to you, and then I will issue that, and you can make that available to the applicant, and obviously, the board, and the and the public, if you want to address it at the next meeting.
What are we looking at next meeting date, Noreen?
So the next date we had put aside was March 21st.
And what are we going to suggest for the agenda items to discuss that evening?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Freeman?
Just just to remind what you, what my client said, I mean, we appreciate trying to have another hearing in a few weeks, but, you know, that's not enough time for us. So, you know, especially since you want the more detailed plans, and then have, you know, a sidewalk, which is fine. But I'm just reminding you that what we said is, we suggested, I think, April 8, I think we suggested April 18th, but I think, you said, Noreen, you know, it's not available, so that's why it's the 25th. So, you know, roughly.
It's an entertaining extension of time.
Understood, and that question will come up on the next hearing, absolutely, because then it would be mid-May, about a month later. I absolutely understand, and we're thinking about that. But I'm just saying that, you know, normally, it would be about a month, hence, and that would have been April 18th, it's not available, that's fine. But that's why we're asking April 25th.
I just don't see how we can keep pushing, you know, from a fundamental, we have a time crunch, right?
Well, what what do you expect to do on on March 21st, if you haven't seen the more detailed plans?
Well, just in, you know, our discussion this evening, maybe the folks would like to hear from the conservation agent, so there could be an update there. We could have a wastewater supervisor here, so we could get an update there. I mean, there are subject area experts in the town that maybe the town people haven't heard from, and for them to come in for five, and I'm not saying that the board would have to agree, but we have to move the process forward, and we need as much information as we can get in a timely fashion, and pushing information out, just like this evening, we didn't have any time, you made your presentation tonight, we had no time to review the documents prior to walking in, that's all I'm saying. We need more time with you, and if it's an open forum, you're going to have to come here, I guess.
Understood, understood, but we had told you that at the last hearing, that we said that, you know, we wouldn't have them until about the time of the hearing. The other thing is, and I hope that the board would absolutely follow what is courteous protocol, I'm not available, I have a schedule conflict on March 21st. That happens, I just checked my calendar. Please.
March 28, March 28. To that point of the vice chair, I'm getting a little nervous about this. I mean, I've, I've helped, I've helped boards permit friendly habitat for humanity projects, that they took the full 40 days of the deliberations to get the decision right, and those are three or four-unit projects, you know, so you got a lot of issues to address, and I'm getting nervous about your, you know, the time left for the public hearing to close, and then deliberating on that decision, and issuing that within the required 40 days. So I'm getting concerned about your time as well, so I would recommend, my recommendation would be, you know, we issue them a letter by the end of next week, and have another hearing session, and start to get their answers to that, maybe the 28th, I don't know when you're available, if Mr. Freeman isn't available on the 21st, but we need to get answers on this. And and I, again, I'm not a box turtle expert, but we'd better get an answer on that soon, because I don't know when, I know that they have to be done at a certain time of the season, I just don't know when it is. So we don't want to, you know, we, even if they refuse it, you want to get the answer.
I think it's right about now.
Yeah.
Because I saw the girls doing the one on Kendall Place.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
And in my mind, it was like March or April, the turtle girls.
Right, that makes sense.
I think the other issue is, I think, I agree, I think there's a lot of agency heads in town that want to or need to weigh in about things, so.
And it's kind of a two-way street.
Certainly.
Can, I thought we were going to discuss a date, but thank you.
So just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said by the applicant, that the conservation did everything that they were going to do. Basically, all I think what they were doing was trying to ascertain if there's a wetlands, the wetlands are what their jurisdiction is over, but at the end, they did request that a habitat survey be done, so I think that should be noted. And the peer review engineer made a point that it wasn't really possible to really review this project without knowing the use of the adjacent parcels. Well, that was his statement, I said right there. No, he did say it, it's in, that's why I brought up the issue about, get an answer to it at least, he definitely raised the issue, and and Mr. Cody is not a zealous advocate on behalf of boards, or one way or another, he tries to call it the way he sees it. He definitely raised the issue, and that's why I raised it tonight, too.
With all due respect, the application is based on the 15 acres, that is before the board. We have clarified every time we've come. We acquired the properties, the abutting properties, we have them under contract to protect our interest, to deal with these very things that you're talking about. For example, if we had found that there was wetlands on the property, we would need to make adjustments, we want to have that property to make adjustments. If during the DEP process, which is going to be six to nine months, if they request adjustments, we want to have the land to do it. We are not trying to do anything other than be brutally honest, and to tell you, that land, we are going to hold. We hope for future development that will be done in cooperation with the town under your existing zoning and bylaw. The gravel pit is a completely separate animal, we have it under contract, the gentleman owns it, or family or trusted owns it, they have certain vested rights in it that I believe are even in litigation until the property sells, because he has an existing gravel pit, an existing commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. Those are the type of things that have to be worked out, not with the ZBA, because it's not before you, the gravel pit is not before you. And the other thing that people don't want to stop and look at, that front piece, and part of the reason why we pushed it to the back is because people said, well, we don't want to see it, or we don't want it on the sandwich road, because it's different. That's why it's set back, and the other thing is, you have a large utility easement that runs across that front portion, and it's not the best place to put an apartment building. So we've been very, very thoughtful in our process, and we've been very straight with you, and we've given everybody the answers they want. When, there's not much more we can tell you, we're responding to your questions, we've gone to the proper authorities, we go to the conservation, we give them what they want, we have the proper inspections, the conservation issues are resolved at this point. There are no new conservation issues, there's nothing under the conservation's jurisdiction. So that item is closed. Our stormwater in, has already been peer reviewed, our traffic has been peer reviewed, there were responses and requests beyond the scope that we had to go to, you asked us to go and look at a completely different intersection that's way outside of the scope of where we're supposed to go, we did that study, we provided that information to your peer review consultant, he made some comments and suggestions, we responded to them. They've been on file for over two weeks, that information is with the CBA. So everything that you've asked for, we've worked on. We're, we took on this project of changing things to address the buffers and to move buildings into lower heights. We didn't have to. Mr. Pucci would explain to you that they could sit there as a 40B player and say, those are our drawings, that's our plan. We didn't. We went and we did the good thing, we tried to make it better, and we're doing that. And what we're asking you for is, give us the time to put the pieces together, give you the drawings now that we have a general consensus that you want us to go that way, and let us give you the plans, we'll check with the peer review people to make sure they're comfortable with the changes, and then we can have another constructive meeting on the 25th of April, if that's your next available time. And it will give you the documents almost two weeks before that meeting. In the meantime, Mr. Pucci and Mr. Freeman can discuss some of these waiver concerns and issues, we're hoping the waiver list comes down when that plan comes in, because we will submit a new waiver list with that plan. So you'll have an updated waiver list, you'll be able to look at it. And at that point, on that evening, I think you'll have a real plan, you'll have some additional very thoughtful questions, we can address them, you could have Vanessa here to close out the traffic, and then, after that, we can schedule a site visit for the first, you know, the last day of April, the first week in May, and then we can have a meeting and go through waivers.
So I I wanted to give them a chance to think about the request, but are we getting a a no on the on the survey? Because that's that's important, let's clear it up, because if it is March, then if we come back in late April, there's no point.
Through the chair, through the chair, with all due respect, you're asking us to do a wildlife survey?
Yes, habitat survey.
Which the state has ruled there is no habitat, there is no, there is.
I just want to.
The question then is, is.
Through the chair, can I finish? Don't hammer, come on, let's talk.
Then stop talking, it goes through me, let me ask the question.
We weren't aware you wanted to ask a question, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. The request from the board is, are you willing to do what we requested?
This is the question, I know you're not a wildlife specialist, what we will do, what Mr. Pucci's going to do, is he's going to put together his bullet points, which address wildlife, habitat, whatever his questions are.
Will you do the survey or not? Yes or no?
Well, depends upon what he asks for, we're going to pick up the phone, we're going to pick up the phone tomorrow, and we're going to call Scott Goddard, and we're going to ask him, what haven't you done? As Mr. Pucci has said, he's a professional engineer, he doesn't do things to make me happy or your side happy, he calls a spade a spade. And let me finish, excuse me. So what we're going to do is, we're going to talk to him tomorrow, we'll get his letter by next week, ask him what he wants, by then, we'll have real information from Scott Goddard, what hasn't been done, and we can then respond to his point with a letter saying, here's what we can do. We're more than willing to look at it and consider it, but when you make a broad statement, do a wildlife study. What do you want studied? What do you want looked for? That's something that Scott Goddard, the professional, has to tell us, and we'll ask him to reach out to the state, ask him to reach out again to Natural Heritage that already said nothing was in play. That's what we'll do, and we'll get it back to you. We're trying to be very, very responsive to your request.
Mr. Chair, I don't want you to bang the hammer at me, because, but I, I'm not, I got to be clear, it, I know, I don't want to hear from Mr. Goddard that they've done what they have to do, I know they have. They've, they've done what they have to do, the state has not told them to do it. What I'm saying is, we have good faith evidence that people have raised about habitat issues on the site, and what what I was asking the applicant to do is voluntarily do a habitat study, and have Mr. Goddard make the proposal about what that would entail, what he would be studying for, whether his his survey, when he does his field work, can be witnessed by somebody, you know, from the board or from the town, maybe the conservation agent, and then a public report will come as a result of that habitat study, that at least the board can look at and say, oh, he did, I'm satisfied that he did, you know, what should have been done on the site, and here's what his findings were. And and it's not something that the board can compel you to do, and and that's why I'm I'm just, I would get the proposal from Mr. Goddard, I would, I would recommend strongly that the applicant agree to it, you don't have to agree to it, but it would go a long way to to the board, and it would go a long way, I think, to some of the people that have raised these issues. And and I'm not, and it would be a habitat study, including but not limited to box turtles and any other, you know, good faith species, whether it be animal or vegetation at that site, and it's not limited to rare species either. So that's, and and it looks like we're getting late in the season that you do need an answer on that. And that's something that you could get the answer on offline, and you could bring it back to, you know, in the public realm, that here's what the resolution of that issue was, here's what they're doing, or here's the survey results, and it can come back in the public process. So it is something that you could, you know, negotiate and get agreement from the applicant outside of the public hearing, and then whatever the result of that was, could come back to the public hearing, so that you don't lose that time about if there's a, if there's a potential seasonal issue, that they have to be out there soon.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. All I was going to say, and Dave said it a little more expansively, but I had said earlier, it's true, we're not giving you a yes or a no tonight, but what I had said, and Dave reiterated, is we will talk to Mr. Goddard, who's our expert, and Dave said that he will have Mr. Goddard check with the Natural Heritage Office, and we can make a decision, and let George and you know, before the hearing, if we think there's something appropriate to do, we will get it underway. But I think it's only appropriate that, in our position, that we have the opportunity to speak to our expert. So we're just being candid, that's why we're not saying a definite yes or a definite no. So I would hope that you would accept that, we'll talk to Mr. Goddard, we'll respond to George Pucci, and, you know, that's what we'll do.
We need to pick another meeting date here.
Yeah. But but I should say, that that's reasonable, because again, it's not done in secret, whatever we can work out, and whatever they would agree to and have underway, then you can report at your next public hearing, so that we don't lose that time in the meantime. And then people can judge that report, it'll speak for itself, and they can judge its credibility, and what type of data it provides.
One would think, and I'm not an expert, Betsy might be able to tell us more, but I would believe that the springtime as of now would probably be the window that one of these needs to be done. And I don't know, the hesitancy is palatable.
It's not hesitancy, it's being candid, and it may well be, as both you and and George said, it may be right now, the spring, and that's what we'll talk, one of the things we'll talk to Mr. Goddard about, so that's fine.
So, next meeting date? So next meeting date?
So we had first put aside March 21st, which-
Well, I respectfully ask that it definitely not be that night because I have a schedule conflict. I already said that, Noreen.
April 4th, is that the next?
After that, we had April 4th.
We could do the traffic and the potential study then anyway.
Well, the other thing is, I think that we need to get agency heads to weigh in and then I think that we can, through the zoning administrator, submit additional things, things that we want to discuss with the applicant after review with agency heads and discussion. So I would suggest there, Mr. Freeman, if that's agreeable to you, Mr. Calhoun, you'll get something, email or letter correspondence from Noreen indicating, these are the things we'd like to discuss on that particular-
On what, what date is that?
April 4th.
I, I mean, if you want, I mean, there's not really, you know, your agency heads were all per the rules and regulations, your own rules and regulations. They were notified with the original application and they were supposed to respond within 15 days. They have. Everything is in the file. I don't know what the agency's heads would be brought back in for.
Our conservation agent asked in his report for a wildlife study.
Your conservation agent, please, please read their, their report. Please read the determination by the state and by-
He'll read it to you.
If I may, if I-
Oh, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, we, we need to, we need to schedule, I think, the next meeting. We're going to keep going back and back. The reason is to ensure that, again, we're going to get all the information.
Yeah.
I don't want to stifle the question and I'm happy to let you to read it in, but I would rather pick a date now. We're just kind of going in circles at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I may just, and I, and I agree. I mean, that, that's one of the things that would be looked into. I agree with what Dave said, but certainly, you know, several things, the fire department had signed off, but yes, we'll show them the new plans, you know? The same with the peer review, you know? I don't believe that there's significant impacts on the storm water drainage system, but obviously Phil Cudera will go over that and the further design with your peer review. So those are important things and I don't know, again, if that would be achieved by April 4th, but is that the date? Yeah, April 4th. But that's, that's reasonable. And if you have specific things, Noreen can send us a list. You certainly, it's your own prerogative, but always has been through Noreen or anybody on the board to contact, or probably more appropriately, Noreen, to contact any town official that you want, including the conservation agent. Certainly, we understand that. So I'm comfortable with that. I appreciate it and so, April 4th.
So we have to talk about it? I just, I rambled on for 20, it took way too long.
Well, yeah, I don't think we need to go over it. I know, Dave, Dave, you-
We're going to give you a list.
Excuse me. What you rambled off, Mr. Pucci, all takes time to execute and provide the information and get it back. And the board typically is looking for it to be filed with them one week before it comes forward. We asked for a special situation here because we weren't doing a working study. We were doing a public meeting. So that's why this came in at the last minute. For us to be productive and to present proper information, if you're getting your letter to the board sometime next week, that is next Friday, probably. That'll get to the board. It'll take the chair in a few days to read it if he stops and has the time to deal with it. So we're not going to see it probably till the, two weeks out. And whatever that report requests, we then have to go out to professionals on our team to address your questions in a professional manner, get their responses back and then get it filed with you. So to be back here on April 4th, we're going to be tying up everybody's time when we're going to be a lot more productive if we're able to fully accomplish what you have. You'll have the information to read it and digest it, which Mr. Fineran always accuses everybody of sneaking around and putting it in at the last minute. And we don't want Mr. Fineran after us for a last minute. I'm surprised he didn't-
I would suggest that-
Two weeks isn't enough for you?
Excuse me?
Two weeks isn't enough for you?
We're not going to have your questions.
Four weeks till April 4th.
Dave has said what he said. I respect what the board wants to do, set a date, and I have an idea as to what you want.
My suggestion is going to be that, yes, April 4th would be the date. We will get something to you about things that we'd like to discuss, or at the very least, the concerns that the board has that we'd like addressed at the next meeting so that we could then continue to move the process forward.
Understood.
And, yeah, that's well said. And you can always continue the hearing if there's nothing for the applicant to present, but keep it going and keep it scheduled.
I want to, I want to, if there's not, if there's nothing meaningful that's going to happen that night, I'm happy to-
And, and let's get that commitment on the record that we're-
Suggest continuance at that point.
And, Mr. Chair, let's get that commitment on the record that we're going to, before that, we're going to, we're going to get an answer on the habitat survey in the next, you know, forthwith. We're going to get an answer on that so that you'd be able to, you know, address that publicly when we-
I would anticipate having something too early next week.
Certainly next week, not the end of the week. Tomorrow's already Friday. I assume Mr. Goddard would be available, but-
Sunday week.
Yeah, absolutely. I, that's fine. We want to do that.
Your motion to continue to April 4th, 2024, that will be Noreen here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Give it to Suzanne. Sir?
Yes. April 4th would be here.
Can we reserve the 25th to, to go through what we're going to submit to you two weeks before? Can we have that be the next meeting after that? So we-
April 25th, is that a-
Yeah. That's a request.
April 25th is the meeting following April 4th.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we'd go April 4th, April 25th.
Absolutely.
And we will file with you two weeks before.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Was there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear one. Second, Scott, all those in favor.
Actually, time out, time out. April, aren't we April 25th, Noreen? Thursday.
25th.
Yeah.
Four, then 25.
Four, then 25.
Who's, Scott was the second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I want opposed. Continued to April 4th. Following meeting will be April 25th. Both meetings here at the Lawrence Gymnasium. Where's the agenda? Open meeting. Thank you. We have minutes from February 15th and the 29th.
Tabling.
Tabling both. Board discussion. Board updates. Future agenda items.
Motion to adjourn.
Procedurely get to that.